Recording in progress.
It's Tuesday, June 27, 2023. This is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session.
Marnie, I think you have to mute. Are you muted?
I'm not. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, Master Plan Implementation Committee, an update. This is you, Ms. De Maria.
Hi, everybody. I just have a quick update today and a request. So last time the Master Plan Implementation Committee met, we started to discuss prioritization of primary goals. And this was a request by Mr. Stivers, who, this was before the Select Board was having their goal-setting meeting, and he thought it would be a good idea, and the committee agreed to start to think about aligning master plan goals with overlapping Select Board goals. So there's already been some work done to that effect, and we know which ones those are. But now that the Select Board has finished or accomplished their goal-setting, what we wanted to do is plan a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Planning Board to align on the goals. And so the idea would be Master Plan Implementation Committee would prepare some sort of a document of some sort of overlapping goals. And the reason for this is that there could be, or there are some boards, committees, or departments that have goals, they want to accomplish their goals, but they need some sort of funding. And there could be some funding opportunities. And so this gives the Select Board an idea of, you know, which, you know, which goals require some sort of funding opportunity, and also the ability to make a decision on, and align with Planning Board, on, you know, prioritization of those goals, especially if it requires funding. So the ask tonight is to see if the Board agrees that we should have a meeting, a joint meeting with the Select Board, and perhaps maybe choose a date, or a follow-up then with the Select Board on choosing a date. Anybody have any questions?
So would that be at a Planning Board meeting?
I think so, because master plan falls under planning. So I would think that the master plan implementation would be invited to a Planning Board meeting as well as, right, as well as Select Board.
Okay.
So then, I guess maybe the timing would be at our next meeting, if it's possible, or one after that, in July.
Just a quick question. So you said a document would be prepared. So when would that be prepared? And from a timeline, would we have enough time to review that document?
So we haven't, we haven't prepared that document yet. We have prepared, Judith Watson's done a lot of work, and she's prepared a document that shows the overlapping goals. So it could be that, that document that we've already prepared. It may not be more than that, but I think that we wanted to meet one more time to see whether or not there was anything additional that could be helpful to the conversation, especially now that the goals have been set by the Select Board. So I didn't really answer your question. When is our next meeting?
The 10th.
Couple of weeks?
Yeah, like two weeks.
Yeah.
Or the next is the 24th.
Hmm. Does the Board have a preference? I haven't even watched the Select Board meeting to know what the prioritization is on their goals. And we'll need time for the master plan implementation to meet again.
So probably it's unrealistic for the next meeting.
Yeah. So proposal would be then to meet on the 24th. Yeah, if that's agreeable to everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else on that? No? Next item on the agenda, a discussion item, MBTA Communities, Townwide Mailing, charrette. Colleen, you want to kick us off on this one?
Sure. So we are getting ready to do a townwide mailing, and we're going to have it priced out so we can spend the funds that we had allocated for this year. And we'll get those encumbered, so we have a little extra time to do it. But that's my big thing. I'm looking to get my mailing list from the town clerk. And we'll work on a flyer, of which I would love to see Marnie help.
I'm happy to help. I just, I think we should put in a plan. So kind of what is the strategy that we're trying to aim for? And then the first mailing would be the first of like the plan. So I feel like a little bit more thought should go into what is it that we're trying to achieve, and then have a subsequent set of mailings versus just a random flyer. Like, I think we should have a place where people can go. I think we should have, you know, meetings where people can get information. There should be, you know, just a little bit more concerted effort to be able to get this information out. So, Colleen, I'm happy to help on the side to like kind of put that strategy in place, and then how do we execute against the plan? If you want to kind of in tandem, find out what those mailings cost. But I would like to spend a little bit more thoughtful time doing that, so that it's not willy-nilly and it's not wasted effort.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not being as forward as I should be after all of our meetings, Mimi. They have a lot of documentation that I'm starting to put up on the website, excuse me. And it's, we're definitely a little bit more organized than I sound. But yes, definitely, we need to share things and get the Board's input on the mailing and how we're going to go forward with it. There's so much information we have.
My thought is that, so we talked at the last time about doing a charrette like they did in Lexington. And on last Thursday was a meeting of the Metro West Regional Collaborative, which I put out there, we were thinking about doing that. And the feedback was, don't do it during the summer. You'll get all kinds of feedback that it was during the summer. So my thought is if we could do like informational meetings, kind of like the PowerPoint that we did last meeting, just to get the information out there and have that coincide with, you know, mailings. And then in the fall, do a charrette that starts to lead into the more definitive decision-making process of this. Ms. De Maria.
Do we want to take any sort of a position on this? I was just thinking about what does the public see? You know, there was the letter that the Planning Board had written, maybe co-wrote with other part, you know, maybe town administrator, you know, and Colleen, of course, had a big part in asking questions of, you know, about how this applies to us. And, you know, we've had a number of meetings now where I think it's, you know, it's definitely clear, and we've made it clear, that we're working towards a warrant article for, I think, Annual Town Meeting 2024, right? So I wonder if we, you know, not anything formal, but that we want to start saying that, you know, we really want the public's input because this is something that we have to make work for all of us, and we're working toward that. And we want your input because we want it to be successful. It scares me a little thinking that, you know, what if it doesn't pass? I don't know what happens, you know? But I think that we should make our best effort. And it occurred to me when we were having the joint meeting with Shopsey and others, and, you know, there's people that are passionate about certain aspects of, you know, whether we're going to have super-dense housing, or whether we can take, you know, you know, have other options, let's say, whether it's phased in or not phased in. Those are all details we're not going to know until we start hearing from the public, I think. And we have more, and we might all have individual thoughts on that, too. But I think that as a Board, we are aligned pretty much that we're going to go forward, we're going to put our best foot forward, we're going to put through the Housing Choice Act and try to get it passed at town meeting. And that might really not be something that the public knows. They should, but if they don't watch every meeting, they may not know. They might think like, oh, you know, I don't know if we're going to do that. You know, we are going to do it. You know, we're going to try to do it. So I think just somehow we should maybe make it a little bit more formal or forward to say, you know, this is what we're aiming to do. We're going to comply. Because there have been other discussions about pushing back, looking at towns that are pushing back. And I never heard that from this Board. As far as I know, we're moving forward.
So I think that the mailings and info sessions will move us towards that. So there've really been no decisions made right now. We're moving forward, but I don't, who knows what will come out of all the public outreach and where that will bring us. And the feedback that we've gotten from speaking with Chappa, who's one of our consultants on this, is like, don't make any decisions until you bring the public in. Because otherwise, people will say, well, what's the point? You already decided. But that's not what we want to do. We want the community involved. Mr. Stein?
Yeah. I think it's really important that we wait until the public hearings before making any votes on any positions. And typically, in my experience, we typically, as a Board, historically have usually waited until either the last public hearing or the at-town-meeting public hearing to take a vote on a position on something like a zoning change. So I agree with Mimi that by going forward with the process of the So I agree with Mimi that by going forward with the process of the, the public outreach, and then the public forums, we're doing work that leads to the formation of the zoning change. And then, the public hearings will be the point at which we will start, in my view, at least I'm speaking for myself, that's when I would start taking a public position, endorsing, you know, the actual zoning change that's in front of us. Right now, we actually don't have a zoning change, really, to endorse. We could say, you know, we can individually publicly say, you know, eventually, we hope for the outcome of this passing, but we don't actually have the specifics of the zoning change to endorse right now.
I think we do. I think we know that if we accept, you know, if we try to put a warrant article through and don't make any changes to Housing Choice Act, that, you know, we know that simple majority, or something, Town Council can advise us. But if we make changes, then it's going to be a...
Well, we haven't set the, our, you know, height restrictions, setbacks. We haven't really decided on an actual district yet. There's many details that go into a zoning overlay district that are not in front of us now. So we should wait until the public hearings, in my opinion.
So, Mimi, I did put up, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Just, just one other thought, as we kind of look forward on how we want to approach this, and how we best want to get the public involved in this. Mailings are great, but maybe we could utilize, through SAM, doing some type of like PSA, a five-minute video that could be shared on social media, just kind of giving the bare basics of what we're looking for, and what type of input we're looking for. I'm sure Terry would be thrilled to help us out with that. But, but again, it's just another way to be able to help spread the word, and do it in a short fashion, something five minutes, that somebody's not going to want to sit through a whole public forum to hear what people have to say, but just give them an idea of what we're looking for, and what our hope is, in the public participating, you know, and what we would be looking for from them. So that's just something to keep on the back burner, to think about as we move forward in conjunction with the mailing as well. Thank you.
Part of the plan.
We have Terry signed up already. But, so as far as the language, I have started working with some of the bylaw that they sent us, kind of a sample. So I do have some things in writing. And, you know, as I more, what now, all I'm doing now is making it Southborough. Not putting any setbacks, not putting any sort of, it's just words. So maybe by the next meeting, I can hope to have that done, and you guys can look at it, and start making it a working document.
One thing I think would help also, just to get the ball rolling, is utilizing the website. I know it's new, and we're still figuring out some of those things, but if we dedicate some kind of a link, like we did with the outdoor illumination, or the Tree City application at the time, and bylaw, if we do something like that, and it can just already put some of the information that we already have. There was a memorandum from, that Vanessa and Colleen worked on, that explained the status of the MBTA Communities Initiative for Southborough, that was utilized for the joint Planning Board/Select Board meeting at the time, a couple months ago. So documents like that, maybe the PowerPoint presentation, and then we can also send out an e-alert that goes to anyone who subscribes to receiving e-alerts that come from planning, maybe with a note saying, pass this on to other media, social media avenues. We get those for anything, like, we just got one for the CPC forum this evening for 8:00 p.m. That similar kind of thing. We can do something like that, and at least get it out to certain groups, who will then also send, ask them to send it out as well. Just so that MBTA Communities is not a foreign word to the public. And they don't have to understand it all, but they should know that this is something that's coming up. And maybe, in a really layman's terms, say briefly, this is what the goal is. Maybe something like that. We can work on that.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Mr. Litt?
Tim Litt, Woodland Road. I just wanted to make a brief observation on mailings. When you're trying to do a townwide mailing, you have to keep in mind people's attention span, and, you know, what they've been through before. So I would encourage you to keep it, you know, simple, short, and, you know, have places to go for more information. What you really, the most you can hope for is to get people's, you know, attention. If you, if you send them something that's, that's large, it won't get read, or it won't get understood. I mean, you have a lot of detail, and that isn't the place for it.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
We currently have seven attendees, no hands raised.
Okay. Let's move on from this one. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, implementation of Planning Board policy for public shade trees on scenic roads. And I guess, so the first question on this, this is whether the Planning Board believes we should implement our own policy on public shade trees and stone wall removal on scenic roads.
So if I can just mention, that is really the discussion for tonight. The Chair asked me if I could put together something to have in front of you. It is something that I made based on a couple of towns that have something similar. Wayland, Sherborne, Natick, and maybe another town, all very similar. And so, you know, there's draft language there, but that's not necessarily, you know, what is actually before you. There's a number of towns that have scenic road handbooks, scenic road policies, scenic road rules and regulations. And so, I put something together I thought was sort of the most simple, and also incorporates the very important list of scenic roads. That was very hard to come by, and actually, Marnie presented at town meeting. And so it's a combination of, you know, both scenic roads having to do with trees, and extra protections for trees and stone walls. And it's in no way supposed to override anything that has to do with tree policy. That's the Select Board's policy. So this is supposed to, you know, meant to be something completely different. If it overlaps in any way, it really shouldn't. But it wasn't meant to do anything like that, but that's kind of just a background on it.
So my suggestion is, first, the Board decides whether we believe that we should move forward to implement a policy. And then, you know, thank you for all your work on this, Debbie, but I didn't really have time to go through it. So if the Board decides that this is something that we should pursue, I would suggest that we review this and come back with comments at, for the next meeting.
I just want to say one more thing, and that is, one of the lessons, I think, coming out of town meeting, where the public body didn't vote to adopt scenic, you know, the remainder of roads in towns becoming scenic roads. The first portion of this document is really how to, you know, if you live on a road and you want it to be scenic designated, you know, what law do you follow, and what, and what to do? So I think, I think that this also is somewhat educational for the public, in a way. And I think that was one of our kind of actions, coming out of having that warrant article defeated, is to say, well, maybe we can do something more in town to educate people of what a scenic road is, or what are the benefits. And I think as we're doing tree hearings and stone wall hearings, they're probably, you know, getting that feeling. So the first part of it is, if they want to designate their road, you know, how do you do that? And that, I think, is just educational, having a policy that, you know, so that people, raises awareness, really.
So does the Board want to move forward and adopt a policy? Mr. Stein?
Oh, Mimi, I was agreeing with you that we should review this, and then readdress this at a subsequent meeting.
But what I was asking is, if, if the Board doesn't think that it's necessary that we have a separate policy, then there's really no benefit in reading this and coming back with comments if we don't want a policy.
I'm pretty ambivalent.
Okay.
Personally.
Ms. Holahan?
Yeah, I agree. Right now, I think I'm ambivalent. I want to kind of get a feeling for what Deb's put together. I think there's an education component, and then the policy component. Like, there's law. So then, how much is reinforced in a policy? So I just need to kind of read what your initial thoughts are. I do like the fact that educating people that these are streets, and you live on a scenic street, we talked about that, should be like a welcome packet, or, you know, something from this town when people move on streets. So I'm ambivalent right now. I can't make a decision to help you, Mimi.
Mr. Maria, I know how you feel. Ms. Broschel?
I feel the same as, as Jessie and Marnie. I think I want to explore it a little bit more, and I agree on the education piece. So.
Okay. Very good. Ambivalent. So we'll discuss it at our next meeting. And does this fall under the new rules and regulations by law, that it would require a hearing?
Possibly, yes. There's a, I think somewhere in Chapter 42 of the General Code, it refers to, when you have rules and regulations to process. I'd have to look back in the book to be exact, but I'll send out an email to the Planning Board members clarifying.
Okay. Very good. Onward. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 42 Central Street, History and Arts Center, major site plan approval.
Colleen, we have Michael Weishan and the attendees to be elevated to panelists, and also his attorney, Eric Russell.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm not, I'm mute. Oh, she can't hear me?
Yes.
Ms. Broschel? I'm recusing myself from this discussion, because I wasn't a part, but if, I'll put my laptop on the table, so if there's any documents shown, Attorney Talerman will have them in front of him as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Colleen, can you hear me when I'm not unmuted?
I can hear you. No, I can't.
All right, so when I talk, I'm going to be...
Oh, Karina, it's picking up through the open laptop. There's a reverberation.
Karina, you should be able to talk into your mic, and I should be able to hear you.
Karina, you want to bring us up to date?
Yes.
Yes, I do. One second. So at the last Planning Board public hearing on June 7th, no, I'm sorry, June 12th, the meeting was continued to this evening, with action for the Planning Board, deadline for action is July 14th, via an extension request that was granted at that time. In the interim, we received a PDF plan with some updated information on the set of plans, and a, what appears to be a response letter with comments on what was revised in the plans. But I have not received, you know, the full document sets for distribution to the Planning Board. We did receive it Monday morning, because it was Friday afternoon it came in in the email. So that's why you don't have hard copy plans to review. Also, they came in a little too close to the Planning Board meeting, the PDF itself, never mind the plans. So I have asked Michael to please provide the required number of sets, A, so that we have a complete revised submittal, and B, so it can be sent to Fussin O'Neil for follow-up review, as the standard process is. We specifically coordinated this meeting this evening, since Town Council was available, and also, the applicant's attorney, Russell, was available this evening. As you know, we usually meet on Mondays. So this meeting was, you know, geared for that, so that we could have discussion with both attorneys present, and Planning Board could ask their questions, and receive guidance, et cetera. So that brings us to this evening. I did receive comments from the Fire Department, and they had nothing really to note, other than their standard form of comments for access, et cetera. Let's see, we also received some feedback from the Board of Health, that I guess there was some concern with the food kitchen, and something had to be done as far as the septic system. And I can give you more detail after on that. We received comments from the ADA Committee, which is the Southborough Accessibility, Public Accessibility Committee, regarding, it was difficult to see the access requirements were addressed. But that was much earlier, back in May. So plans have been revised since then, but not rereviewed by Fussin O'Neil. So right now, as far as the Planning Department's concerned, we don't have a complete resubmission for full review. And my apologies, the Planning Board does not have that, other than the one PDF set of plans. Also, I just also made Michael aware that when he submits response comments, that they really should be in their own response letter, and not just a markup of Fussin O'Neil's, because Fussin O'Neil's letter has their engineer's signature on it. So it's very difficult to tell, you know, I know, but for the record, you have a document that's signed by Fussin O'Neil with, you know, typewritten comments on it. And we don't know who made those comments, per se, and, you know, who's backing those. Usually, the engineer, the design engineer provides those responses in accordance with the plans that he's revised. So that's where we're at. And we're hoping to get some good consensus and discussion this evening, so that we can move this forward, and get this project moving all around.
Good evening, Mr. Weishan and Mr. Russell, welcome. Would you like to start off, Mr. Weishan?
No, I'm going to leave this all to Eric this evening, unless you need me for, to answer some specific questions. Other than to say that, you know, we did respond to these Fussin O'Neil comments several weeks ago, in general, and I think it might be helpful just to go through them one by one, and try to eliminate these points of discussion, so that we can get this moving. Because as you know, this has been a very, very, very costly process for us already. So with that, I'm going to turn you over to Eric, a much more competent expert on this than I am.
Just, just for the record, Michael, we received comments, your comments back on Fussin O'Neil's comments on, I received an email on Sunday afternoon.
I actually responded two weeks ago, and said in general that we disagreed with most of these comments, and that there were actual factual errors. I didn't respond to them individually, but I did actually indicate as to what, what was coming. Most of them simply punted these decisions back to the Planning Board. So as I said in my correspondence, I don't think we gained much by this... I don't think we gained much by this review, but again, I'm going to let this, I'm going to step back from this and, and let you guys discuss it so that we can hopefully get this new History and Arts Center moving to Southborough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Eric Russell. I'm here from Trokitis and Bluestein on behalf of the Southborough Historic Society. As Michael suggested, I think it probably would be useful to go through the points that are raised on the Fussin O'Neill letter, just to discuss what's within the planning board's jurisdiction under the Dover Amendment and what the planning board is asking for with respect to some of these that, that might fall within its jurisdiction. Does that, does that make sense?
Sure. Colleen, could you share the Fussin O'Neill letter? The one from, with Mr. Weishan's comments on it?
Yes.
And, and real quick, just a question. Are there any items aside from what's on the Fussin O'Neill letter that, that are still up for discussion?
I have some other comments, and I'm sure there are others on, from the other board members. But we can, we can go through Fussin O'Neill and then go through the board for their individual comments.
Okay.
I just want to point out that we don't have hard copies that were distributed to the planning board members of the recent submission. So the process is that these hard copies are supplied so that we can deliver them to the planning board, so that they can actually review the plans. It's not the easiest thing to review site plans with a PDF. So if the planning board is not completely prepared with all their comments, it's because they don't have the most recent set of revised documents to review. They only received a PDF, and at that, as Mimi indicated, was Sunday. So we sent them out as soon as we got them, the PDF, but you cannot easily review plans in a PDF, just to make that.
You know, Karina, I just, I would like to object here briefly and interject. The last time, you told me not to provide these until you had a chance to review them, because as you know, these are very costly for us to produce. They cost $300 each time to produce these paper copies, which I'm not sure really anyone ever looks at anymore. But, that being said, as I think we go through these things, you will see that most of the Fussin O'Neill changes to these plans are essentially Scrivener's errors. You know, they wanted the, the, a location of a topography within 300 feet, they wanted the drip line to be in scale. There have been very minor corrections to these things. So as I think as we go through, I don't think there's really anything substantive in the changes to the plans. They're just minor corrections. You know, please put this comment in, or please delete that. But, you know, we'll see as we talk about this, this evening.
So, Michael, am I correct that paragraphs one through three all fall onto that category? These are things that have been addressed, and once the planning board can review the plans, these will have been addressed in there?
Yes, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that, with the exception of one, because I believe our comment there on one, this was a question to the engineer, was that this was not a Dover matter. But, you know, it might be just worthwhile just to go through them, one, two, three, four, and just, I can chime in to give whatever little information I have as the, you know, redistributor of this info.
All right. So is there additional information provided on, on paragraph one?
Not by knowledge, because I don't believe traffic surveys are within Dover requirements.
Okay. Yeah, that's correct. I, I would agree with that, that that's not, that's not part of the regulation.
So in two, the flood plain plan was in fact provided on the new ownership, and on number three, the ownership zoning and use of the topography within 300 feet was corrected on this version. So those, those were addressed.
Okay, great. All right. On number four, landscaping designation plantings, you know, our position is that landscaping is not within the definition of either parking or open space. As I know Town Council provided a presentation to the board a couple of weeks ago and explained what subjects may be regulated under Dover Amendment. Those are bulk and height of structures, yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage. Within those categories, and those are the only categories that the, that the town can regulate through a zoning bylaw for a Dover Amendment protected use, those regulations still have to be reasonable. We don't think landscaping falls within either, you know, any of those categories. The society is not, they're not proposing any landscaping. And if the board is claiming that this is within its jurisdiction, and even if that were conceded, there's still the questionable reasonableness that's, so courts have held that regulations that diminish or detract from the usefulness of a project are unreasonable. In this case, we have a historic building that historically was not landscaped. Part of its value is seeing it in its historic state, and requiring landscaping for that will diminish or detract from the usefulness of that project. On top of that, another way to show that it's unreasonable has to do with cost. Without knowing what the, what the planning board is asking for here, you can't really do an evaluation of that. So I, just in short, we don't think this is within the planning board's jurisdiction to the attempt, to the extent that the planning board wants to exert jurisdiction or try to. We don't think that's a reasonable regulation here, in part because of the way it impacts the character of the building, and in part because we don't know what the cost would be, because we haven't had any feedback yet that I'm aware of. Michael, is there anything you want to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, my understanding is that landscaping that touches parking, which we have landscaping required with parking, is jurisdictional, but Mr. Tullerman, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Can, can everyone hear me? Eric, can you hear me as well?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, so it's clearly jurisdictional. Parking isn't just the provision of parking spaces. Parking's a much more complex item for planning board regulation under site plan review than just how many raw parking spaces are you requiring. Landscaping is a traditional requirement for parking. That said, I, I can't sit here and tell you that every single potential landscaping requirement that you may impose in some way is going to be sustainable. As Mr. Russell suggested, there is analysis here. However, the mere provision or the requirement that an applicant provide some landscaping doesn't necessarily mean that it's unreasonable, just because they don't want to provide it. The provision or the requirement to provide landscaping would be measured against the impact that it has on that project. The analysis is a little bit more complex than Mr. Russell suggests. Analysis would require, in this instance, some analysis of the impact to the usefulness of the project. I can't fathom in a million years that it would diminish or detract from the usefulness of the structure. I think it's easily demonstrable that it would probably enhance the, the use of the structure. That's one of the reasons why we have landscaping in, in parking lots, in addition to the other climate change and other important considerations. Turning next to the next part of analysis, it is conceivable, although we don't know yet, and it's, there's no reason necessarily to get into that yet, that additional landscaping requirements, should the board even require them, and that hasn't been decided to my knowledge, but should the board require them, the cost to provide the, those landscaping improvements would have to be juxtaposed against the overall costs of constructing, rehabbing, operating the particular project. Again, we could all come up with a hypothetical where that cost would be excessive and perhaps pass a tipping point. I don't think we're at that point yet. Mr. Weishan has stated, and he is a nonprofit organization, that every cost is an impact to them. That's fair comment. That is not the end of the analysis, of course. A lot more goes into that. I think before you get there, though, and just go off and into your respective corners, so to speak, there should be a discussion. And that's what happens during, during these kinds of reviews. There's a discussion as to whether or not the, the planning board considers landscaping an important component of this parking lot. In recognition of the fact that it's a Dover protected use, perhaps the planning board may be okay without much landscaping. However, to the extent that the planning board wants to use the process to implement some of the important landscaping elements that it went to town meeting for and got approved at town meeting, then I think that's a, a good discussion to be had. And with that discussion, there'll be some analysis as to the impact to this particular project from its, you know, function, form, and everything else. And that's the kind of analysis and discussion we should be having. I don't know anyone on this planning board to have prejudged whether or not there should be landscaping, what type of landscaping should there be, and whether or not they're going to compel this applicant to implement it to the ninth degree under your particular regulations. As I understand it, that's all still out in front of you here. Not that you're trying to belabor this particular hearing, but I think that should, should remain part of the discussion, should the planning board want to continue to discuss.
I think that it, that's mostly fair. I think that that undersells, though, the importance of the character of the building. This is a historic building. The society has documented that it was traditionally not landscaped, and part of the value to the society of purchasing a historic building and maintaining it in its historic state is demonstrating to the community, showing to the community what it looked like historically, what that part of town looked like. And requiring them to change that modifies part of their program, which is owning and operating a historic building.
I don't think that historically it had a detention basin in a big parking lot, either.
No, some things have to change over time, but to the extent that it can be kept consistent with its historic character, that's an important part of what the society does and an important part of what they preserve.
Mr. Stein.
So as far as landscaping in the context of parking, I'm going to agree with Town Council that that's jurisdictional for the planning board and move forward on that basis. Just going back to traffic, Mr. Tullerman, are you in agreement that they are exempt?
Well, from some, from volumetric or nearby intersection analysis, they, it is not a part of Dover Amendment analysis here. There are a few cases that touch on it, but there's more cases that are on the side of not being able to regulate that with respect to Dover protected uses. I'd also submit here, without knowing too much about it, so please take it with a grain of salt, that we're not talking about a use that's going to generate a tremendous amount of traffic anyway. So I would suggest the, the volumetric issues are probably not, not as important. However, with all those caveats in mind, which I think resolve more favorably to the applicant than we might like, because we do like to take a look at traffic as a municipality. The issue of traffic in relationship to ingress and egress to the parking lot is, is important. I have no idea whether or not that's an issue in this matter at all. It could be the safest entry to the parking lot ever, but I just recently went through some litigation where traffic in relationship to access and exiting from a, from a particular site was an important factor. So basic safety things in the site, out of the site, vis a vis the parking area is still regulable, but I would agree that off-site traffic is not something that you can capture for Dover protected use.
Well, on that basis, I think we would need the information regarding traffic, personally.
Ms. Houlihan.
So with regard to the, the parking area, I'm in agreement that that's in our jurisdiction, and I think from a municipality perspective and to the points that Mr. Tullerman, Tullerman made, that it is part of our oversight, and we do try to enhance, and we do believe that landscaping enhances the, the parking structure, particularly where there's these proposed 26 spots, and gravel. I'm, I'm less concerned with the traffic based on the use of the, the building.
Mr. Maria.
I think that the boards have been inconsistent with requiring traffic studies. I served on the ZBA for a number of years, and that was one of the patterns that I noticed, is sometimes it was required and sometimes it wasn't. This property is located on a collector road, and a collector road, I believe, I'm looking at the map right now, but I think that Central Street is, connects two numbered roads, Route 9 and Route 30. So collector roads are really where you expect traffic to be. So if they're not on the arterials, they're on the collectors. And so I think that it would be unreasonable to require traffic study. I haven't heard that there's going to be a lot of anticipated, you know, traffic use, maybe, I don't know as much about that as I should, but I think that the road that it's on is not a sensitive roadway, it's not a scenic road, it's a collector road, and it's made to handle traffic, and I don't have any problem with traffic.
Landscaping within the parking lot?
So I'm ambivalent about, about landscaping. I have, I know that there were some conversations that I wasn't part of, that I saw some correspondence on, there's a lot of correspondence, and perhaps I've missed it, where there was discussion about that it was, you know, planning board felt that it was required, and there was pushback from the proponent, but I don't know if any details were ever exchanged between the two parties. Did we ever give any sort of an idea, or did Mr. Weishan give any idea about if he were to provide landscaping, what, what could, what could minimal look like, or has the planning board spoken to the proponent about what could minimal look like, or what's expected?
No, he just said no.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, I, I didn't, yes, excuse me, it's Michael Weishan.
Mr. Weishan.
Yes.
Mr. Maria, Mr. Maria is speaking.
Well, your answer was incorrect, but that's fine. Thank you.
Well, just to finish that, I, I, I think there probably should be a conversation about it. I think this is what Mr. Tullerman has said, and I think there have been some conversations, but in terms of what that might look like, I think it would be reasonable to, you know, provide that to Mr. Weishan. That's what the planning board feels.
Thank you. I also agree that I think that landscaping is very important within the parking, especially since the parking lot backs right up to the, a detention basin. I think there's a safety issue there. If there's no landscaping or fencing or anything to keep people from driving into the detention basin. Additionally, there are deeded parking spaces for the town, for people to utilize the park across the street, so I assume that there'll be children running around there. So I think it's important that there's something that blocks children from diving into the detention basin. So I think that in this case, landscaping is very important. Additionally, the, the building and the parking take up much of the setback, so I think that can be mitigated through landscaping also.
Again, I'm gonna, I will reiterate that that does diminish from the historical character of the building, and that's something that, that is weighed when determining whether regulation is reasonable or not under the Dover Amendment. That goes directly to the organization's educational purpose of educating the town of Southborough and, and members and neighboring communities what the town was like historically. So I think that, you know, I'm not saying there can't be a discussion there, but it does, it does directly affect the usefulness of that building to their educational purpose.
That, that's not quite the test. I, I think it would be their burden, let's assume, and no one is there yet. Again, I Again, as Ms. Maria said, it's a conversation that still has to be had. Let's assume that the Planning Board wants to impose a requirement for landscaping that is beyond what the applicant chooses to provide, and that we end up in, unfortunately, if we ended up in litigation. The burden to show lack of reasonableness doesn't go to their particular, the historical elements of the parking lot. The first burden of proof for the applicant to show is the lack of reasonableness as it applies to municipal interests in imposing landscaping requirements. The second component would be whether or not, through imposition of cost or otherwise, the requirement for landscaping detracts from the usefulness of the project as a whole. Certainly, they're free to make an argument that it historically had no landscaping context in a parking lot that never existed. I don't think that's an argument that gets very far, but they're free to make that argument. But the reasonableness of action of the board goes to the reasonableness of the reason why you want landscaping, not the reasonableness of the fact that it could potentially detract from some yet non-demonstrated historical elements of a previously non-historical parking lot. I get the point a little bit, but their burden of proof on the detraction of the reasonableness would probably relate more to the overall operation, the cost of operation of the enterprise itself, rather than the historical elements or lack thereof of the parking lot. I appreciate the comment by Mr. Russell, no question, but I think the analysis is not likely to fall on that. And again, I think the board, from what I'm hearing from the board, it's all about a discussion moving forward. I don't think anyone's drawn a line in the sand on what species have to be there and what the landscaping looks like. I think it seems to me to be more about opening up some dialogue on it.
Agreed. So is there room for discussion on this, or?
So yes, I'm listening. You know, Planning Board members, I would like you to provide for me a budget in order to do this landscaping. You know, one of the things that we committed to in doing this building was making it fully ADA compliant. This has been a huge hit, $400,000 in mounting, both for changes to the structure, for $120,000 for the elevator. Now we're looking at a potential cost of $100,000 for the ramp to the exterior of the building. Ladies and gentlemen, we had a fixed budget for this building. We do not have additional funds. The current plans call for granite curbing around a gravel parking lot, which is precisely what you would see at the Wayside Inn if you went there today. It's totally functional, no one can drive into it. I agree, I'm not a fan of these basins, and if we can get some funds in the future, maybe that's something that we can address with the Conservation Commission about putting these underground in some sort of way, because I understand there is a mechanism that allows us to do that, that would even create some additional parking. But we do not have the money. Even with the current $200,000 grant that we just received from the Mass Cultural Council, we are now slashing elements outside of the construction of the building in order to simply finish and open the structure. You know, we've been living in a 10% inflationary environment in the building trades. Some things like cedar shingles are up 20%, 30%, 40%. Guys, you know, I am a landscape designer. I would love to do landscape for this building. Originally, we had a budget to do this. Originally, we wanted to use well water. We don't have remaining funds. So within the fact that we don't have remaining funds, yes, I'm willing to discuss this. And yes, maybe there's a part two to this process where we can come back once the building is permitted and open and starting to generate funds and readdress these issues. But, you know, I just, you know, this isn't a commercial development. This is a bootstrapped operation by a tiny little 501(c)(3) that is attempting to open the first-ever history and cultural arts center for the town of Southborough. And, you know, we just, we don't have unlimited funds, especially with this ADA commitment. So that's all I can add here. I'm happy to have that conversation later in the day, but I need to finish and get an approved building permit in order to get this building open. So that's my real focus right now.
So I'm at a loss here. If we're gonna go through here and there's gonna be, there's no room for discussion, no room for compromise on anything, I don't know why we should continue.
Well, I mean, you should continue for a few reasons. First and foremost is that the Dover Amendment is a difficult animal, and you should finish the process. Second, from what I'm hearing in fairness to Mr. Weishan, is a potential seeds of a solution here, where A, he's willing to discuss potential landscaping, but B, the timing of that in terms of a condition of approval might be something that he may want to include as part of that discussion. I don't want to put words in his mouth. I could envision, perhaps, a timeline, a condition that had a timeline for the installation of approved landscaping that you have. I still think you should discuss what that landscaping may look like, because you don't want to leave it too open-ended, in fairness, to you or to the applicant. But I don't think it's unreasonable to suggest, if he can demonstrate that there's a significant cost element to this, and landscaping is not inexpensive, it may or may not break the bank, I don't have that inclination, but I would have no objection to considering by landscaping shall be installed by year two or something like that, once he gets on his feet with respect to this project. That could be potential for resolving this particular issue. I'm not suggesting that you should impose that condition, I just, but I just heard Mr. Weishan said he'd be willing to have a discussion, and he did throw out one potential variable. I think it would be fruitful for people to have that discussion.
On to number five.
Number five, I don't believe this is relevant, says that applicant, proposed signs must be shown on the plans. There are no proposed signs? Anything, any questions about that before I move on?
Well, just if they're, if, in the future, if you want to install a sign, you would need to get a building permit. And depending on that sign, may have to go to the ZBA.
Would that not be a minor modification?
I think the society can cross that bridge if they ever get there. At this point, there is no proposal to install a sign, though.
Oh, that's right.
Anyone else?
This is the ZBA.
Yeah. Okay, number six.
Six, lighting is, I think, similar to the landscaping question here. Again, right now, the society has not proposed any lighting. If the board does think it has jurisdiction, there's still the question of reasonableness, which, you know, I agree with Attorney Tullerman, that part of the analysis is the town's interest in having that installed. I don't think that's weighed just against the cost relative to the project. That's one way to demonstrate unreasonableness. The courts have said there are multiple ways to demonstrate unreasonableness, and one of those is if something detracts or diminishes from the usefulness of a project. This project is different from a lot of the cases that you look at dealing with schools, things like that, where you're really dealing with how useful is it, how many people can access a building, or something like that. Because part of the usefulness of this, as I said, is the historic character of the building and maintaining as much of that as possible. So I think that is part of the analysis here. I think we're probably in a similar place on this, that there, that there may need to be a discussion. I'm curious to hear what the board thinks about this.
Mr. Stein?
So going back to Mamie's comment earlier about the proximity to a playground, I believe there's a baseball diamond across the street, and I'm not sure what the hours of operation of the historical society is going to be. These are all things that come into play when it comes to lighting a parking lot from the, in the context of public safety. So I think more information is needed.
So we did provide the hours of operation in the letter that I provided to the, to the Planning Board.
Okay. What are they?
And let me bring that up real quick. Anticipated hours are Monday through Thursday, noon until 9:00 p.m., Friday, noon until 3:00 p.m., Saturday, 9:00 until 5:00.
Sorry, it was, the first one was Monday through Thursday?
Noon until 9:00. Yeah, Monday through Thursday, noon until 9:00.
Till 9:00 p.m.?
Yes, correct.
And you don't, your position is that the parking lot does not need to be lit in the winter at 9 o'clock at night?
I believe, I believe Michael thinks that this is a well enough lit area, given its proximity to the road and the streetlights, that it probably doesn't need additional lighting. Michael, do you want to add to that?
Yes, I would say that, you know, our current museum has a single streetlight out in front of it, and we have no external lighting, and we've been functioning that way for the last 30 years. You know, again, ideally, I think there would be some lighting in this project, but I don't think it's happening, I know it's not happening in this current round because there are simply no funds for it. I do think that the lighting on Central Street and whatever small lighting there may be on the building would be equivalent to what we currently operate under safety at the Flag School, and have operated in that similar way all this time. So again, I'm open to talking about this stuff, but, you know, we don't, I don't know if you've actually priced lighting for municipal, for commercial structures recently, but we're talking $100,000 if we're talking a day in some sort of lighting scheme, certainly as proposed by the previous applicant. So again, I think we'd like to try to do the minimum amount we can to get this building open and functioning, relying on the municipal lighting, and then potentially enhance in the future.
So just for context, you're referring to the, your existing facility that shares the parking lot with Pilgrim Church and Town Hall. Is that correct?
Yes, and that parking lot in front of our building has one streetlight on it.
Right. What are the hours of operation currently of that facility?
Ah, well, I mean, we haven't been there much since COVID, to be perfectly honest with you, but when we were in full swing, they were pretty much the hours of operation we're proposing for the new structure. We were often there with late-night meetings, and as a matter of fact, it was used and may even still be used for town meetings in the evening without any additional lighting other than what is provided by the streetlight.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Houlihan?
Yeah, so I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Weishan, so, and appreciate the cost factor. I think that for public safety reasons, if you alter your hours to be when sunset occurs in winter and summer and fall and spring, I would be amenable to a phase two of a lighting plan. But you would really, I'd really believe that there's a liability risk for people, whether there's ice, whether there's ill conditions in dark times. So I think if there's the amenableness for you to restructure your operating hours to when there's daylight, then I would, I'd be, you know, willing to go to a phase two for a lighting plan.
Mr. Maria?
I would agree with a phased-in approach. I was just thinking back, we had a proponent who actually said he didn't like to pay a lot for lighting, and he was proposing to put some sort of spotlighting, that, you know, sensors or something like that. I don't know how expensive that is, but I wonder if that might be a kind of, I guess, in a way, a bit of a compromise for safety. I have something in my house, light pops on, it's really bright when I walk outside, and then it goes off 10 minutes later, and it wasn't really expensive. So I am concerned about safety, but I also think, you know, just in trying to be reasonable, that we can come up with some solution that, you know, makes it safe for people to use the facility at night.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the rest of the board. I think it's a safety issue, and I think Ms. Houlihan had a good idea. If you want a phase in lighting, you'll need to adjust your hours so you're not there at night. Different from what was happening at the Flag School, there are all kinds of public activities that are proposed on this site, and I, you need to look out for public safety. And the streetlight on Central Street isn't going to light the parking lot. I have a streetlight at the end of my driveway, and it shines on the street. It doesn't shine in my driveway at all. So I agree with the rest of the board on that. Mr. Tullerman, is lighting reasonable for a parking lot at night?
Certainly, park, lit, lighting in a parking lot is a vital public safety issue. I think if we had a member of the Police Department here, they might echo that. There is also the ancillary use of this parking lot, which the, I believe the town retains rights to a certain number of spaces in the, in the parking lot that has to be considered. But Ms. Houlihan had a, had a good idea. Ms. Maria mentioned a common sense approach as well, that there's probably much less costly lighting that would provide a benefit for public, for people walking at night to get in their cars, either out of the building or, or otherwise. Certainly not, it's not a $100,000 item, but, but there is a cost to it. So I think, again, a good discussion item to be had. It seems like there's a way to reach consensus on that, whether it be phased in or a cheaper alternative for, for lighting that would be more palatable with their operating costs.
Okay, so is there room for compromise on this one? On lighting? Mr. Weishan or Mr. Russell?
Yeah, if money can be found. Again, you know, if we can find the money to do this stuff, we can do almost anything.
So if not money, then a phased approach where you would adjust the hours so you're not open when it's dark?
You know, quite frankly, we're rarely open when it's dark anyway, but yes, I'm sure that we can adjust the hours. You know, also, just to address the business of the, of the town spaces, I intend to go back to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, and re-discuss this, because those deeded spaces have imposed a substantial liability on the society, which you have referred to just now about children and safety that is presumed that we would somehow be able to cover. So unfortunately, when that agreement was drafted, there was no indemnity provided to the society for, you know, what would happen in case of an accident. There was no provision to have the town light those spaces that they're requiring, nor was there any provision as to who was going to clear them or keep them, you know, safe in the winter. So I have on my agenda to go back to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, to try to get some clarity around these issues, because as it's currently constructed, this is a real, a real issue. And, you know, we do have substantial use of that parking lot, even as gravel now by people during construction. So, you know, we need to, we do, we agree that we need to work this out further with the Select Board.
So what we have to go on is what is before us now, and that's the 12 deeded spaces?
I believe it's eight deeded spaces and four floating, but, you know, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And number eight, Michael, was this updated on the, on the plans?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
So number nine?
So number nine, obviously, the applicant is asking to utilize a gravel lot. The bylaws do allow the planning board to allow for material other than bituminous concrete, and they are asking for a gravel lot. Although the building historically would not have had a parking lot, a gravel lot is, is more consistent with the appearance that it would have had rather than an asphalt or concrete lot.
Mr. Stein.
I really don't have much of a problem in terms of granting a waiver for this, personally.
Ms. Houlihan.
Yeah, I just want to make clear that the plans that we did receive, the ADA spaces and aisle will be paved, but the remaining slots will not. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't have any issues with granting a waiver, and I believe this is still our jurisdiction.
Ms. De Maria.
I'm in agreement. I'm okay with a waiver also. Thanks.
My only question is that the planning board can grant something other than bituminous concrete if it can be proved that the drainage erosion, siltation, dust, and appearance are satisfactorily controlled. Do we have proof of that?
All I can say is that you've had a gravel parking lot on this site for the last, I don't know, 30 years. I don't think there's been any problem. So I think experience is the proof in this factor.
That parking lot has been horrendous. It's had huge divots and puddles, and it's been awful.
Well, it's not anymore. We've had to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in order to provide this drainage system that no one seems to like, and simply to get the building to be habitable. So it's sitting on, I think, two to three feet of crushed stone as it currently sits. I believe the final plans call for it to have a peystone gravel base, which would look a little more exciting, but have no major functionality difference. I mean, professionally, we install gravel driveways all the time. They're the preferred method or preferred application for historical structures because it's what would have been there. In this case, it would have been a field, just grass, but I have really no experience with a gravel driveway or parking lot causing dust or other type of disturbance issues. I mean, rocks don't generally move much.
Do you have any comment on this one, Mr. Talaman?
I would probably defer to Fussin O'Neill on the drainage issue. I'm not altogether that concerned about, depending on the material that he uses, on the dust question. There may be a requirement for conditions for future operations and maintenance of a gravel driveway that makes sense, but I think you'd get guidance from Fussin O'Neill on that anyway. So I would say the drainage and the future maintenance obligations there, some more technical in nature, I'm sure Fussin O'Neill can comment on whether or not the, the plan with the new drainage drains well, and then can recommend a condition as to annual kind of regrading as necessary after winters because of, snowplows going to pull out half the gravel at any given point in time. So I'm not expert enough, but that's why we have Fussin O'Neill take a look at those things and make suggestions.
So I can say that we don't have drainage calculations for the current design that we have submitted in front of us now. Several years ago, under the prior major site plan that had lapsed, and that there was a different layout, so to speak. There were different sizes to the lot. There was more paving. There was less paving in certain areas. This is a different configuration, and therefore, I believe Fussin O'Neill had indicated that they would need some evidence that the current proposed grading and drainage functions as it says it would. So I believe that's, that's referenced in Fussin O'Neill's comment number 13.
So with respect to drainage?
So although you have a stormwater management permit based on the previously approved site plan, the planning board also has jurisdiction for drainage on the current proposed parking. And if they feel that it's an important part of the parking design, so that it functions in the winter or during heavy storms, or what's the potential for runoff when you don't have a paved surface, how are the catch basins protected, various things like that should be addressed in stormwater calculations or report of some sort to give the planning board a sense of assurance that the parking lot will function as it is planometrically laid out. In other words, you have a site plan, and it shows a parking lot, but there's a lot to it that happens, the grades, you know, time of concentration of how fast water moves across certain surfaces, and this is a somewhat different layout. So in my opinion, you know, I would let, you know, I think the board should want to see that this drainage functions. It's part of the safety assurance of when you waiver the type of surface from bituminous concrete to gravel. It's in the town code. It is related to parking. In most cases, on projects of this size, it's not an exorbitant fee. In my opinion, I've laid them out myself. I've prepared cost proposals in my history of creating, you know, preparing drainage calcs. So, you know, as a, you know, speaking on the engineering side of my experience, I think it's important to have drainage calculations to assure that the current basin that has already been installed will work with the changes, and the amount, the plan that was provided previously is different. And I, and, you know, the conservation has their say, and the planning board has their say, different aspects of the same component of a project. So, you know, that's my take. You know, the planning board has to decide to what.
I would say that those are different aspects of the project, and that does affect the board's authority with respect to them. Courts have regularly said that drainage can be regulated even on a Dover Amendment use when it's dealing with wetlands protection. That's what Conservation Commission is dealing with. There are two land court cases saying that adequacy of drainage outside of that context is not something, it's not one of the categories that can be regulated under the Dover Amendment. So it's our position that that's not within the board's jurisdiction.
I disagree, as it applies, you know, drainage, generally speaking, maybe some elements of it not regulable, but, and I'm not suggesting that they have to have an absolute by-the-book drainage analysis done, but they have to provide enough information, whether they can get that from some of the Conservation Commission's submittals or not. A parking lot that floods and ices over is not much of a parking lot, and it's clearly regulable for public health and safety reasons. So I would suggest that even if not a full boat of what you would normally require can prove that it's not, or demonstrate some level of confidence that it's not going to flood and not going to erode, and that there's a good operation and maintenance system that would satisfy Fussin O'Neill and Karina, then I think that that's a reasonable analysis. Again, I don't think anyone here is trying to make the applicant go broke, but you also, Ms. Luttrell suggested that it's already a problem with puddles and ruts and everything else. So the maintenance of this parking lot is somewhat important in focusing squarely on the utility of the parking lot and not some other element of drainage. I think it's within your jurisdiction, and I'm not aware of a case that discusses that drainage as it applies to the safety of a parking lot cannot be regulated.
And if. And just to be clear on, on Mimi's comment, I believe that was a comment on the past conditions of the lot, which have been recently updated. Is that right, Michael?
Yes, that's correct. And I, you know, I want to go back to what this Fussin O'Neill letter says. It says, the letter, the letter further indicates the revised project proposes to reduce the impervious area, providing additional reduction in peak stormwater flows. Fussin O'Neill does agree that the reduction in impervious may reduce the peak flows, however the applicant shall, bing, 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 bing. All these things have been done. You know, provide a copy, you guys already have a copy of the 2019 stormwater design. We already have a copy of the Conservation Commission 2019. The, the current design has already been submitted to Conservation for review and approval, and the Conservation Commission has signed off administratively. So, you know, I really, I don't think there is a functionality issue here. Also, I just, you know, I do this professionally. We build parking lots and parking structures all the time. I would be a very, very, very poor head of a landscape architecture firm if I were designing parking lots that were going to flood. Now, this particular parking lot is also set on essentially three feet of crushed stone. So I have been there during major downpours recently, and, you know, there's no possibility of a puddle because the whole thing is one giant drain tile. And I also disagree with what Karina says. She keeps saying that this is a not expensive issue. I've been told that this is a $6,000 to $8,000 hit, and $6,000 to $8,000 is not something we have to throw around. So if this is, you know, we have one attorney saying this is jurisdictional, we have another saying it's not, we have a Conservation Commission that's already approved this, I would like to ask the board to just let us go forward without huge, major, you know, the full calculations of this. It's just, it's just money we don't have.
Michael, just to rebut one thing, if there's three feet of gravel there, you're overpaying for the gravel because your construction detail indicates 12 inches, eight inches of base and four inches of top gravel base, of top coat of gravel. So if you, if you're telling me you put three feet of gravel in there, something's not, doesn't make sense here because you're going way beyond what your proposal is. Your proposal in the construction details clearly says that gravel parking area has eight inches of compacted gravel and four inches of compacted dense graded crushed gravel. So I'm not sure where you're coming from with the, you know, the three feet of.
Well, because I was there during the construction, Karina, and I saw how far this had to go down. You know, the entire foundation was excavated down to a depth of six feet along most of its foundation in order to be repaired because it's simply, you know, it was simply falling apart stone. So the entire basement was excavated down to four feet, and it's all crushed stone, and the area around it was excavated and then refilled with crushed stone. The whole thing is a giant drain tile. I'm, you know, so I, you're going to have to accept my word on this, that they went well far beyond what was required because of problems with the structure. You know, the drainage for the parking lot is really not a big issue because it sits on a hill and slopes downward. The drainage for the building was the big issue because the thing was flowing into the building through a stone foundation with a high water table. So, you know, again, I don't think this is an issue of the parking lot. This was an issue of providing drainage for the building, which has been remediated at the cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars of unanticipated costs. I mean, there was a reason this building was sold for $17,000 back in the day because nobody except us would, you know, possibly think of, of trying to rehab this building. Thank you.
So I, I think that does leave open opportunity for discussion as to what, short of full calculations, the board might like to see. Like I said, our, it's our position, it's not jurisdictional, but, you know, we're, we're open to hearing what you would accept in lieu of that full calculation.
Well, I can say that based on, and, you know, I'm just speaking from what I read from the Fussin O'Neill report. So number 13 says that per section 17413.5, Stormwater and Erosion Control, provided stormwater control design letter indicates the applicant is not proposing changes to the stormwater previously designed by engineering design consultants and approved by the Conservation Commission in 2019. The letter further indicates the revised project proposes to reduce impervious area, thus providing additional reduction in peak stormwater flows. Fussin O'Neill does agree the reduction in impervious may reduce the peak flows. However, the applicant shall, A, provide a copy of the previously approved 2019 stormwater design to ensure the drainage currently proposed does match the previously designed. So on that matter right there, the submittal of your application did not include a copy of that. So Fussin O'Neill has asked in their review comment letter that the applicant provide that, and that's what the applicant should provide.
Karina, you do have that in your files. I mean, you guys have that.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Wyshan, we don't interrupt each other.
But it's just not my job to complete your application, Michael. If you are coming forward with a major site plan application, it's your job to provide that. If I provide everything for every applicant, nothing will ever get done. So I'm sorry, but I think that the applicant should provide the required documents. We only require two copies of those. So I cannot provide complete applications for applicants. The applicants have to provide the complete applications and supplemental information as required or requested. The other thing is provide a copy of the Conservation Commission's approval of the 2019 design. Other applicants, when requested to provide copies of permits, supplemental information, provide those, and they don't expect the, you know, the municipal staff to have to go through back files and provide all that information again for the applicant. It would just simply take too long. It's not the way it works. That's not the process. Part C, submit the current design to the Conservation for review and approval. It would be at the discretion of the CONCOM to require new stormwater calculations for the current design. So you did that, and they were satisfied with their amendment, with your amendment, I believe, in, in that regard. However, their town code section does not include that when you have gravel parking lot and a waiver is requested, that the planning board has some jurisdiction in order to require that the drainage works under the current conditions of what's proposed in the site plans. Part D, the project was not constructed, the project was not constructed, meaning the previous project for which these drainage calculations were provided back in 2019. So those do not match the current site plan that is proposed. So the project was not constructed, and the applicant is proposing a new design. It is a new design. It's not a 100% total change, but it is a new design which impacts drainage. It's at the discretion of the planning board to require new stormwater calculations for the current design. So those are Fussin O'Neill's comments on number 13 that relate to the drainage calculations. The planning board relies on the town's engineering consultant to provide these comments, and mostly we follow them unless there is something that's very egregious or that stands out that isn't. So based on that information, I feel like the applicant should provide that information so that Fussin O'Neill can continue to review and perhaps and most likely determine that the drainage calculations are sufficient. But without that information, I don't think it's my job as a town planner to complete your application. So, you know, we want to get this moving forward, and the way to do that is to address the comments and not expect somebody else to do that for you. And that's all I have to say about that.
Mimi, may I speak now?
Yes.
So our argument was that this was non-jurisdictional. We still maintain that. We are happy to try to provide some of this stuff. This, when these Fussin O'Neill comments came back, this is the first that we've heard of this. So, I mean, I can certainly go and provide a copy of the stuff that you already have a copy of, and I will see whatever else I can do to make, you know, to further this thing along. Mimi, may I speak now?
Yes.
So our argument was that this was non-jurisdictional. We still maintain that. We are happy to try to provide some of this stuff. This, when these Fussin O'Neill comments came back, this is the first that we've heard of this. So, I mean, I can certainly go and provide a copy of the stuff that you already have a copy of, and I will see whatever else I can do to make, you know, to further this thing along. But, you know, I do think it is a reach that this is jurisdictional for the planning board. But, you know, we can come, I think, to some agreement about this and hopefully can find a middle ground that's not going to cost $6,000 to reduce something that was already done back in 2019. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Michael. We just, the planning board just needs to know that this is going to work and it's going to be safe. That's all. Number 10.
Ten, Michael, do you have any comments on showing how the, how parking lines are delineated?
Yes, historically, parking lines were not delineated, and I don't know how you do that in a gravel parking lot. Again, I would point you to the parking at the Wayside Inn or most historical sites where a gravel parking lot is delineated with some sort of stone boundary, and people just park. Again, and these eight spaces, this is something that is deeded and has to do with the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board. I don't necessarily think that this is something that really enters the purview of the planning board in terms of how these eight spaces are laid out. Even the current deed arrangement gives us total discretion as to how these will be allocated, when they will be allocated. And as a matter of fact, it also gives us discretion not to allocate them at all and close off the lot for whatever events that we choose to. So as I said, it's a pretty unwieldy, unworkable document, and I would hope that, you know, we can just table this for now and move on to something else until I can get some more clarification from the Select Board.
So I think you're, we're talking about two different things here. Town code requires that parking spaces, you need to designate the spaces. If you're not striping them, then either segmented bumper strips or something else that designates the parking spaces is a requirement of town code. The 12 spaces that are within the deed aren't addressed in this number 10, but I personally certainly think they need to be shown on the site plan. Mr. Stein-
I believe they are. Sorry, Mimi, I believe they are shown on the site plan. Are they not divided on the site plan as to how the parking would be laid out?
No.
Yes. I can, maybe that sheet's missing. I can certainly get it.
So yes, the parking spaces are delineated on the plan. However, that's not the discussion item here. The discussion is during construction, how are the spaces delineated for a complete final project to show that the parking lot is built to standard?
I think, I think Michael was asking for, you know, to not have to meet that requirement because of the way that other parking lots and historical structures have been, have completed in other areas. It's generally considered to be acceptable elsewhere, and we feel it's appropriate here and in fitting with the character of the building.
So that's a nonstarter for me. Without bumper strips, you have no delineation in a parking lot. I'm not, I would not endorse that plan. So we will need, in my opinion, at a minimum, I understand you can't paint gravel, but we need bumper strips to delineate the spaces.
Ms. Houlihan.
I actually haven't really thought about that one. I think it is difficult if there's, I had twice said 26 earlier. My glasses weren't strong enough. It's clearly 28 spaces. We'll know the two spaces of ADA, but the other 26, it's going to be hard to tell. So I would think that there's got to be some level of delineation, you know, even if it's, yeah, I don't know how you do it on gravel. Do we have recommendations? What is a bumper strip?
You know how like you approach a spot and there's like a thing on the ground that you, you know, it sort of shows where the space is?
So against this granite berm that goes around the entire spot, like they'd paint, spray paint, like little sections that are-
No, it's an actual like thing that's on the ground.
Oh.
What's the material that's made out of, Karina?
So they come either in some kind of composite plastic material that gets, or concrete, and it's, you'll see them in parking lots. It's kind of like a parallel, like a half circle, so to speak, but with straight edges, and it's about, I don't know, six, seven feet long, and it sits at the front of spaces, and they use rebar or something to strike them into the ground. That's one way. But I think the code indicates that there, you know, some kind of delineation is required, and it does specifically say bumper strips, and there may be something else.
Yeah, the code does leave open other options. I think we'd like to know, you know, what else would be acceptable besides bumper strips, and have an opportunity to evaluate what the costs of the options are.
Can I just speak to that? The planning board wouldn't necessarily propose to you what should be there. The applicant and their engineer should provide a solution that they feel is best, and then the planning board reviews and opines on it. It's not for the planning board to come up with a solution for you.
They have requested a waiver from it, and if you're going to deny that, we'd like to know what your thoughts are on what you would request instead.
So what would your engineer propose? What options has he worked with that would address parking delineation in a gravel lot? Maybe he could provide some feedback on some options that he could propose for your project that would align itself with the code.
Well, you know, I can weigh in here. One option would be to simply paint the, you know, there's going to be gravel, reused gravel berm. This gravel berm is essentially curbing along all these spaces to retain the gravel. So, I mean, you could potentially mark those spaces. It's not very historical, and I don't know how you would do it in a, in an aesthetic way that wouldn't look terrible, but you could potentially mark the gravel, the granite spaces and delineate it that way. Obviously, you can't mark gravel parking lot. It's not possible. And in terms of, I think it would have to be some solution that utilizes the existing plans for granite curbing, which is a huge expense in and of itself, frankly. So, you know, there might be just some simple method of just painting lines on that with numbered spaces. Thank you.
Are you all set, Ms. Houlihan? Mr. Maria?
I have a couple things, and I actually wanted to pop back up to 13, if that's okay. Section 17413.5, Stormwater and Erosion Control was just taken out of the zoning code. I don't know how that impacts us. That was the warrant article that was-
Yeah, that's, that's CONCOM. That's not us.
That's CONCOM? Okay. A and B, I understand completely what Karina is saying. I think CONCOM should have a copy of the approved 2019 stormwater design. So Fussin O'Neill is suggesting that they, proponent, provide the copy of the 2019 stormwater design and the, and the approval, and I'm just wondering if Mr. Weishen has gone to CONCOM to request a copy from them since they probably were looking at it recently?
No, I haven't, but I can certainly, certainly ask. I'm sure they have this whole thing because they just literally approved this whole thing less than a month ago.
So, and another question I had has to do with sort of this mixed parking lot that part of it's paved and part of it's gravel. Is it your desire to keep the gravel because you want it to look historically accurate, or is it something to do with cost since you will have those eight, six or eight parking spaces that the ADA and those, or is it just the two spaces that would be paved?
It's just actually the two spaces, Debbie. And actually, I think the current plan has it down to one because the number has dropped below 30. So the ADA spaces are paved and the rest would remain gravel. There's two reasons. One is that I think it would look awful without much paving. I mean, it is just, it would be like a Kmart parking lot next to that building because it is a large expanse. And Southborough mandates an extra half foot on these spaces, 9.5 as opposed to nine, so that's added another, I don't know, 10 feet or so to the, to the parking lot already. Historically, it would have been, if there had been any parking lot at all, it would have been gravel. And yes, there's a major, major, major cost difference, you know, factor of tens of thousands of dollars. But we essentially have the gravel parking lot there already because of this drainage issue. It just needs to be top dressed with a final stone. But, you know, paving that would be, I don't, I would guess a $50,000 operation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. I didn't, I'm not a designer, but I think I remember seeing some sort of like, you know, like a, maybe some fencing, fence post kind of things with, I don't know, chain or something that says, you know, parking spots or some, I mean, you go sometimes places they don't have traditional paved parking lots.
Yeah, that's a great idea, and that's possible. What you're talking about is post and chain.
Post and chain, okay.
Yeah, which is a historical look, and that's actually possible because you can actually hang the numeration or the delineation on the, on the post and chain. That's something that certainly possibly could be worked out. I hadn't thought about that. That's a great idea.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good. So this, this is up for discussion, it looks like?
Yes.
Okay.
Michael, you indicated this, that the information has already been provided on this. What is-
Well, you know, the previous, the previous plan had a whole parking study that went along with it. Again, these are, you know, few and far between, and we're so far from these, you know, potential proposed events that I, you know, I'm not quite sure how you would even provide this information. I mean, first of all, we have to actually organize it and do it. This was just an option we threw out there as an interesting scheme about these outdoor events. We've done them previously for Heritage Day. You may remember our Antique Car Show a few years back and, you know, various things. Again, it's, it's very transient. So, you know, I don't, I don't really, other than, other than the parking study that was already done, you know, for this, I don't know that there is anything to, to add. Also, you know, the kitchen portion has been removed because we no longer have the funds to actually do this. You know, as I said, we've been stripping elements out of this building in order to accommodate these cost overruns from the foundation, from the ADA, and from frankly, this planning process, which has been long and extensive and very expensive. So, yeah, so that's all I have to add on, on that. Thanks.
Mr. Stein.
So do we have the amount anticipated to attend the events that haven't been eliminated?
Jesse, that building can only hold 60 people at its maximum use in the upstairs space. Now granted, I suppose if you had people on all floors on something like Heritage Day, it might be more than that. So, you know, I think the parking lot in the current outdoor parking spaces, of which there's a whole line against the park, are more than equivalent. We also have backup parking potential with our friends next door there with the Fayetteville Athletic Club. We've already, you know, mentioned to them that we should potentially renting their lot if we needed some over for parking, and, you know, certainly those discussions can-
Right. I mean, Michael, this kind of, this is similar to what Karina stated previously, that it's not the planning board's job to take your verbal testimony tonight as the plan or as the X. You know, this is, these are things that we need submitted to the board.
Well, you know, Jesse, in all fairness, I don't know exactly what you would anticipate, how I would provide that information. What I'm saying is we would hope to do some of these events in the future. We don't know what the events are. We don't know, you know, we don't know. How would I know this? I mean, I don't mean to be glib, but I mean, how would I know this? You know, I think, you know, you, you schedule events. If, you know, you have a maximum parking of X, you know how many people you can park. That's how many people you can have. You know, we have a parking lot that has 28 spaces or 26 spaces. We have spaces across the street. I would guess that that would be the determining factor. I mean, the fire department is weighed in on this, seems to feel that there's not an issue with, you know, people in the building, and so there's ample parking around this structure. I mean, there's parking on the street next door, Grove. There's parking on Central. There's potential for the next door. I don't have any way to predict the future for it, is what I'm saying.
So Karina, I am really confused by Michael's answer to that question. To, to address his, you know, request for clarification, how do proponents usually address the expected number of, you know, visitors to a facility in relation to the parking?
Sure. As we've seen with prior applicants, most recently, for example, like the car condos that were permitted on Turnpike Road, and also with the prior site plan for this particular site that was proposed to be an antique auction house and art gallery, the proponent came forward and had outlined what types of events would likely occur there for the site and the hours of operation. And when you do that, you can have an understanding of what that impact will be and how often. Are the events monthly? Are they yearly? You have to have some kind of outline. It can possibly change in, in the future, but when you're coming through permitting, you have to define something that you're doing when you explain special events, or you don't have the special events because the town needs to know how that area will be impacted by that, specifically under the parking. And with 12 or the 12 deeded spaces that are already supposed to be saved for the park across the street, you don't have the total number of spaces that are listed there. The other thing is that, let me just finish one last thing. The other point is that, Michael, you referenced the parking study from the prior approved site plan, which has lapsed. Do you know what the hours of operation were for that facility, and maybe you could use some of that information to provide an outline to the planning board, what your events will be in a similar fashion?
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment.
So, well, if I may, excuse me, if I can just finish. In my opinion, based on Karina's answer, it is fully reasonable to expect prior to the next meeting that written outline. Thank you.
So the letter I provided to the planning board footnote two, society anticipates that event space will be available for special events approximately 36 times per year, and that the average rental time will be two hours. So 72 hours of use for special events over the year is what we estimated.
Ms. Houlihan.
And I, excuse me, Mimi, before we go on, I'd also like to correct, Karina, that's, that's not correct. Again, the deed agreement that we have with the town allows us to override those spaces for any of our special events. It says specifically that we can close the entire parking lot for our personal use for any type of event that we choose. So we do have the full use of that parking lot at any time. Now granted, I think that that is impossible to enforce because what do you do if people are parked there? You go, you know, over to the park and try to get them to move their cars. So, you know, again, I think there are problems with that. But technically, legally, we have full use of those parking spaces for whatever events we choose. Thank you.
Was that deed provided in your application as supplemental information?
Yes.
So we would have a copy of that?
Yes.
Ms. Houlihan.
No comment.
Mr. Maria.
I appreciate that clarification. So if I just make sure I understood it, the events are likely to be 36 times a year and two hours?
That's, that's the estimate. That's our best guess at this time, yes.
Okay. And it seems reasonable to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I think the confusion is that in your letter, Mr. Russell, you referred to the Southborough Historical Society's website in which they list all kinds of things that there are- that there are potential uses for this building. So, it sounds like it's going to be going, you know, 24/7, seven days a week with all these different programs. So, I think that's what has led to the confusion here.
No, they, they provided, uh, you know, quite a list on their website of ideas of programs that, uh, that are potential things that they're considering, um, but they're not going to be running all of those back-to-back year-round. The, uh, the estimate of 36 times per year, two hours each is what they actually anticipate in terms of the number of events. All those topics are just, uh, you know, ideas of what, what those, uh, events might be over, you know, any number of years.
Aspirational, I think is the word.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd, and I'd like to get back to those 12 spaces, but I want to get through the Fussin' O'Neill first. So, number 12.
So, yeah, as Michael has pointed out, this, uh, you know, the lot is smaller than what was previously approved for this site. Uh, so he is seeking approval for something that's, that's lesser than what the board has allowed in the past.
So, I'm going to hold off for a moment. I'm going to just go to Marnie.
Ms. Willian.
So, I understand our per section, um, 174-12V, that no more than 25% of the required spaces. Um, I, I mean, I, I guess, uh, I'm satisfied with what is proposed. So, I, um, I, I'm okay with their response.
Mr. Maria.
Well, I would just like some clarification because Fussin' O'Neill is saying it's larger and the applicant's saying it's smaller. And so, Mr. Weishen, can you just clarify that, please?
Um, you know, I don't have the square footage measurement, but the previous plan had a, a very large, actually had an entrance via Grove Street, um, huge paving in the back of the building, um, and a whole turnaround section and I, an additional paving closer, the paving went right up to the building plus a, a ramp. So, what we're proposing is actually smaller, um, and I believe it's actually even smaller now, um, because, uh, they readjusted the parking spaces to go from nine to nine-five. So, um, the number of, the number of spaces in the overall square footage is less than it was previously. So, I'm not quite sure, um, I, I don't think Fussin' O'Neill saw the previous size of the parking lot and that they're basing it off the fact that of, of the, what they got was the, the existing conditions plan that showed, you know, what the rutted thing that was there previously. Thank you.
I wonder, Debbie, I think what he, I think you're looking at the lot size relative the, to the existing lot. And Mr. Weishen is talking about the lot size relative to the previously approved, never-built lot.
Right.
Do I have that right, Michael?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I'm reading the Fussin' O'Neill comment. It says applicant is increasing the size of the parking lot.
Previously approved, not, not never-built lot.
Thus adding...
Debbie, I think that they were referring to the, the rutted kind of parking lot that was previously there. We had to submit a, an existing site, existing conditions plan that showed, I don't, I wouldn't even call it a parking lot. I'd call it a gravel rut space. Um, it, it is much bigger than that, obviously, um, but it is smaller than what was approved in 2019 for John Dillon for Scully. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. Michael, is there any workaround around this? I guess if this were ZBA, we'd call this pre-existing, non-conforming. I mean, what to do about this? This is the problem with this one. Um, there's, you know, we, we've, we've been looking at this parking plan now for some time and this comment is, you know, I don't know what to do about it, to be, to be honest. I don't, you know, um...
I think, Debbie, it's inaccurate. Um, I think that they, you know, that you need to ask them, you know, explain the question to them and ask them to explain their answer because in terms of, of, of pure square footage, what we're proposing is, I, you know, I'm guessing off the bat, 25% less paving than what was previously approved in 2019. So, I think they're referring to the, the, what was there regardless of the plan, just the, you know, the little gravel patch with stones in it that was there before.
I mean, I'm willing to keep talking about this parking lot, um, and I think that we're making some progress tonight with the various components of it because it is, you know, within our jurisdiction and it's, I think that this conversation is reasonable. I, I don't know what to make of this, um, number 12 because of, it looks like under this regulation, if 25% of the required parking is, 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 shall be located in the required front yard and if it's not, I don't know what to say about it. Um, I'm not, I don't think that we're talking about moving this parking lot. Am I, am I wrong about this?
So, what it's, so our regulation or bylaw says that no more than 25% of parking can be located in the front yard.
Right.
Whereas this has 50% of the parking is located in the front yard.
Right.
Yeah, and Michael's just making the point that, um, that, you know, those statements are true. Uh, what was approved in 2019, though, was, uh, non-conforming to a greater extent than what he is proposing now. So, it seems a little, uh, you know, odd to hot, uh, hold him to a different standard when he's, you know, he's trying to do something that's more compliant than what was approved in the past.
Is, Karina, can you speak to that? I, I don't have, I mean, I don't remember the 2019 hearings well enough. So, if that's true, I, I, the proponent has a pretty good point.
I think that every site plan application is... I'm sorry. Every site plan, I understand compromise and such, but every site plan is, um, reviewed and discussed on its merits, not on a prior site plan approval that has lapsed. Um, however, if the same feeling or understanding that it does not impact the neighborhood or the circulation or other aspects of the project, then it wouldn't be a problem here. Um, it is a different layout to the circulation, as Michael Weishen pointed out. The 2019 plan had a secondary entrance, um, egress and ingress behind the building, coming off the side street. It allowed for different circulation. Um, I can't recall if it's the same number of spaces or the same, uh, width of aisle. However, the traffic circulation was different than this one. You had two means of entrance and exit. This one has one.
I think that it'll help once we have the full, you know, whatever revisions are going to be made on the parking, we can, you know, number 12 can be looked at in that context.
Yeah. So, I understand this site, these two lots are all front yard and it's hard to locate the parking anywhere else. But as I mentioned earlier, I would think that this could be mitigated through landscaping, which there was in the 2019 plan. Is that unreasonable, Mr. Tellman?
Um, no, I, I mean, it really depends how we get there. So, I would just want to understand, is the requirements under this provision, um, are they wavable by the planning board? Or is this a black and white maximum of spaces? Because, am I understanding it correctly, this kind of goes to Debbie's point too, I think, that the site already enjoys, enjoys, is not the right word, parking, non-compliant parking in the front yard? And so, if, if the planning board doesn't have the ability to waive it, unless they're doing less parking in the front yard than currently exists, then hesitate to say that it's probably not even this board's jurisdiction over that. If the board has waiver authority over the percentage, however, then I'd suggest that this is where the parking's got to go and whether due to Dover or for other practical reasons, you're looking at a waiver from that. The question I have is whether or not its status is pre-existing, non-conforming without the possibility of a waiver, but...
So, this is where the confu, this is why there is confusion, because there is reference to existing conditions plan that was prior to the work that has been done on the site right now. So, there's an existing conditions plan in the plan set that shows a relatively small parking, gravel parking area that is in no way the size, it's probably one-third of the size of the parking that's proposed. The 2019 approved site plan, which has since lapsed, proposed...
Let's forget about that for a second.
Right. So, that's not what we're comparing. So, we have to understand what we're comparing.
No, no. I'm just trying to get the zoning right, Karina.
Right. So, if there's pre-existing parking that exists...
The original parking...
Right. That's what I'm talking about.
Existing conditions plan.
Right.
Is it more than 25% of the required spaces in the required front yard?
The existing conditions plan doesn't delineate the existing parking prior to this.
Okay.
So, I don't know. I could have, I could calculate and...
What's our, what's our best sense of that?
Well, if I, if you take a look at the existing conditions plan, perhaps you can see...
I mean, you're an engineer, I'm just, I'm not looking to be exact...
I'm a town planner at this stage.
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to get the permitting right.
Right. And all I'm saying is that the existing condition showed a much smaller gravel lot with, um, not even full spaces in the front setback, perhaps maybe the front end of the car, but not a full space. So, I can't, I don't know what to compare. Are you asking to compare that condition?
Well, it, the section of, the, the section of the stat of the bylaw says no more than 25% of the required parking spaces shall be located in the front yard, in the required front yard.
I can't determine that with the information that's been provided. I, that, I don't know how else to answer that. I would, I have a representation...
That's what it says.
I, I know that, I know that's what it says.
Perhaps the applicant can answer that or his engineer can answer what was the existing in there.
The distinction isn't so much whether or not to allow the parking in the front yard or not. It seems like a foregone conclusion that they're going to violate the bylaw by the amount of required parking spaces there.
Right. But I was just trying to answer your question.
If there's an existing condition that's already pre-existing, non-conforming, then an expansion of that, and there are cases on this under the Dover amendment, I'm not trying to create more process unnecessarily, but alterations for pre-existing non-conformities...
Requires ZBA.
Requires ZBA. On the other hand, if it's a new non-conformity, the curious thing about Dover is that it could be considered an, an unreasonable regulation. You don't have to go for a variance, in other words. So, it's a, it's a brand-new thing, then it's kind of somewhere between site plan review and just building permit. So, it is important to establish what's an existing non-conformity and what is a new non-conformity on this. Again, I'm not trying to make more process. On the other hand, if the planning board had the authority to waive any of this under their jurisdiction, then that's a distinction without a difference because you could just waive it. And I would suggest you should be waiving it to at least some degree because there's no other alternative unless you want to reduce to an untenably small amount of parking spaces.
So, the question is whether the existing conditions had 50% of that parking in the front yard originally?
25%, I think it is. Um, yeah, or any other not, existing non-conformity with respect to the parking. If they're, if they're, if they're reducing a non-conformity, fine. If they're increasing a non-con, an existing non-conformity, then unless you have extraordinary waiver authority and you have some waiver authority, I don't know if it applies in all circumstances, then there could be another trip for them. Again, I don't think the zoning board could deny them. I'm just not sure it's up to this board to, to weigh in on the expansion of pre-existing non-conformings. You could weigh in on whether or not, from a site plan perspective, it's a good idea, which I think it probably is because there's no alternative, but they, it may, you may have to put a condition that suggests that they need zoning board approval. And I'm, and I'm not sitting here saying they do. I'm just, you know, when, when Debbie mentioned it, I'm sorry, Debbie, I'm not singling you out for opening up a can of worms, but this issue in particular seems a little peculiar from a, a process standpoint. I think they get there, just not sure it's up to you to grant a variance from it.
No, but the question is whether it's a pre-existing non-conformity. Increasing it would require ZBA. So, if it, if, as existing, 50% of the parking spaces were within the front yard, then this wouldn't increase that non-conformity. Is that the question?
Well, right. So, it says, if I'm reading it right, and I don't have the actual text of the bylaw in front of me, just the summary from Fussin' O'Neill, that no more than 25% of the required parking spaces shall be located in the required front yard setback. I don't know if that condition exists right now. It, as is, not the, not the 2019 plan, none of that.
Right.
I just don't know.
Can I weigh in here for one second? You know, I'd like to remind everyone that this was a town-owned building and that the lot next door to it was originally a house which they demolished and that there was never a formal parking lot at all. There was just space. So, you know...
And that may be a reasonable explanation. If there is no parking even contemplated, then sure, go ahead and give the site plan review and then the non-compliance just kind of gets glossed over under the Dover amendment. And I, I think that's a, a reasonable position to take, Michael. I just don't know if that's the facts based on what Fussin' O'Neill is saying, whether or not there was actually any established parking or if people were just pulling their car up on the lawn, so to speak, which probably is your best-case scenario here.
We have pictures of, you know, the before and that's exactly what it was. It was, uh, you know, uh, there was no parking, there was no spaces, there was no actual delineation, there was no boundary or border. There was just sort of, you know, the cleared land where they had demolished the house and people just rolled into it and parked there, mostly from the park across the street. So, I, I would hope not to have to go down, you know, this, you know, further additional hoops here with it.
Right. And I'm not trying to create that work for you and I think that's a, a reasonable explanation whether or not it's actually the explanation. I don't know because I don't have the historical experience that you all have with it. We, they're on either side of the table there. So, but that's certainly reasonable in which case I would say it wasn't required parking because it really wasn't parking at all. And...
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with what Mr. Weishen said.
Then, then I think, I'm sorry to open up a can of worms there. I think it was, um, a worthy exercise. But getting back to it, I mean, this is the only place he can put the parking, is the only place he can put the parking. So, the, the fact that it runs a little roughshod over your bylaw, I mean, that, them's the break, so to speak, when it comes to the Dover amendment, un, unless you wanted to reduce the number of parking spaces, which I haven't seen a ton of appetite for, given the need for parking to serve this, um, building and probably its location probably stuck with it.
Okay. I think we're good on this one. Um, I think next one, number 13, we've already discussed. And then 14 through 17 was the adaptive reuse, which is non-applicable here.
And Michael, on eight...
And Michael, on 18, is, has that been added to the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone else on the board have any comments, Mr. Stein?
It would seem to me that, at least from my notes, that there's more work to be done between the proponent and the town planner and it would make sense to continue the public hearing to our next meeting. We already have an extension on the decision date until July 14, so it would just be a matter of continuance of this public hearing.
Ms. Woolahan?
I concur with Mr. Stein.
Mr. Maria?
I agree, I have no, and have no, no more questions.
I have a couple other questions. Plan note number four, what does that mean? This plan is for the purpose of obtaining site plan approval from the Town of Southborough Plan, from the Town of Southborough Planning Board owner in contract to vet and verify prior to construction? Because we expect the plans to be built as approved. No answer to that?
Michael, do you have any comments on that?
I have no idea, I'm sorry, I totally lost the conversation. Number four of what?
Note on the plans, general notes, number four.
Can we just put that up? I, I don't have in front of me what you're referring to.
First off, I think Mimi is referring to the prior submission, which we call submission number two. It's also on the plan that you PDF'd to me on Monday, on the cover sheet. General note number four.
I can't-
Do you not have a set of the plans with you?
Well, not in front of me, the second, no.
Attorney Russell, perhaps, do you have a set of the plans?
Colleen's bringing it up.
We, we can see it. This plan is for the purpose of obtaining site plan approval from the Town of Southborough Planning Board. Owner in contract to vet and verify prior to construction. I have no idea what that means. You know, that's, that's outside of my ken, so it sounds to me like it's general verbiage on these plans, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, I've never seen that before. So I'd like an answer on that or the note removed?
Let's just agree to have the note removed because I have no idea what that refers to.
Okay. The 12 deeded parking spaces, the eight and then the four, those should be shown on the plan and there should be signage for those?
You know, again, Mimi, those are our, at our discretion and we are not obligated to do that now until we can figure out, I think, talk again with the select board about how that goes. You know, the, the language is very specific, their location and it's totally up to us. And again, I don't think we're, we're there yet with the select board. I have requested to get on their agenda to talk about this, just, you know, as a, you know, starting point in this conversation. But, I mean, I, we can certainly stick them on the plan as, but they would be totally imaginary until they're actually put in place. And I don't think also that there's any obligation upon us to keep them in any particular location. Where they would, whether they would be located on the further end or near the basins or near the building or in the middle or on one side, you know, I, I don't know, but that's entirely up to us.
Mr. Zhang, maybe just a notation on the plans? That there are 12 deeded spaces or eight plus four would suffice?
Marnie, I believe that was included in this last go-round that you guys don't have, but I, I do believe, I do believe it's been included.
Do you have any comment on that? Should they be shown on the plans as required in the deed?
I'm less concerned that they be shown on the plans. I mean, the, even if they weren't shown on the plans, his obligation to provide them would, would still exist. I think it may be helpful if he's going to fix them where they are, but you could also require that as a condition of approval, too. So it may be helpful now to have a better understanding, but assuming that they can, they can move over time, I want to, I think, I believe he has the right to perhaps relocate them so I could foresee a condition of approval that he shall always delineate, you know, the, the spaces that are reserved under any applicable instrument benefiting the town. We could work on that language later. I'm less, I'm not super concerned about nailing it down right now.
I also want to point out, it is noted on the plan. So if you look at page, sheet number four-
Well, the spaces are counted, but-
It just, yeah, it just, it says 12 deeded spaces for park included in the calculation. Bottom left-hand corner of the landscape plan.
And I didn't see anything about snow storage, where the snow's going to be plowed to on the plan?
I'm sure that can just be added. The, the previous plans had snow storage along the tracks in that area. I'm sure that can just be put back to where it was. You know, this, wherever it was previously is where it will be again.
Oh, okay. Previous as in the 2019 plan?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And also just a note from the, the Board of Health that no kitchen can be permitted without an upgrade of the septic, just to make sure that's clear.
Actually, I don't think that's actually correct. What they had asked us to do, yeah, well, it's correct and it's not, but I, I think it's a little misunderstood. We had originally scheduled, thought about it, you know, a commercial kitchen for that space. That quickly went by the board, given the cost. When I talked to the board, the septic, of course, is in and been installed and approved. And one of its conditions was that it not have anything resembling a commercial kitchen. And subsequently, we've stripped that space out already for cost purposes. So, you know, if it has a small heating oven and a hot plate at this point, we'll be lucky.
Okay, well, I just, that was-
I think it, I think it's been resolved with the Board of Health, is what I'm saying.
Okay, good. Well, that was a comment of the Board of Health and I just wanted to make sure that was passed on. So are we, we ready to continue? I think we've made a lot of progress here, thank you, some-
You know, Mimi, if I may ask, you know, I'm a little unclear as to the marching orders. Are we going to get a letter of specifics? You know, so, you know, it's, I apologize, it's been a kind of a long haul. So, you know, where we're in agreement, where we're not in agreement, some sort of summary of these things to try to work through this in an expeditious fashion? You know, what's been dismissed, what's not, you know, what's still in contention? You know, how do we piece it together from this two-hour conversation?
So, um, some type of landscaping that attempts to comply with the landscaping required in parking and hopefully to buffer the parking from the detention basin. Some type of lighting in the parking lot for safety reasons.
If I may, just to be clear, on both of those we discussed, possibly phasing those in? So that should be part of the proposal, I think?
Okay, so then the, yeah, or the reduction of hours if those are going to be phased.
I was just going to make a comment on the landscaping and I think it's, I, I think if there's a phasing part, maybe it's detention, safety around the detention basin as their primary objective and then a secondary phasing is more in compliance with the landscaping plans by code. But I think that's something that seems appropriate.
Okay.
You know, just to add in, we are looking actively, if we can find someone who will help us pay for it, to try to eliminate these basins as part of a long-term, longer, shorter, longer-term aspect. They were built into the, they were, they were cooked into this plan under the previous 2019 plan that was with, permitted through conservation and had a remaining conservation commission approval. So we were obligated to build them. We've been subsequently informed that there would have been an alternative way to do this, which allowed this to be subsurface. Of course, it would have cost much more. We're still exploring that option as to whether or not, you know, we can, you know, potentially get rid of these things because they're holding, A, I, I agree, I think there's something of a hazard. B, they're unsightly and, and C, they're holding a huge amount of space open that could be, you know, recreational picnic tables and stuff. And we are looking to integrate, hopefully, with the folks in the park and, you know, attract some of those people to the site. So, you know, one of my hesitations in trying to, you know, put any of these current plan, landscape things into a set of conditions is that, you know, ultimately, I think we would like to try to have a different setup here. But I can't promise it because I have absolutely no money to construct it. So, you know, we may have to live with what we have, but on the other hand, I don't want to invest a huge amount of money in this current scheme if we can try to eliminate these basins in the future. And by future, I mean within a year or two's time. So that has been part of my hesitation from the very beginning and also in my firm belief from an historical perspective that less is more when it comes to landscaping historical structures because, again, this building sat in an open field. So I hope that we can have, you know, understanding discussion about that while this stuff is moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Wyshen, this is Marnie. My only comment is we can only approve and move forward on the plan in front of us, so while there's great aspirations, I don't think we can make a plan on aspirations. So I think if we can agree that, that just for the safety mitigation of the detention basins for what they are now, I would be comfortable moving forward and progressing to, you know, approvals versus aspirational. So that's just my, my two cents right now.
You know, so Marnie, what, what would typically be, what would typically go around those basins? I mean, I, I can ask our engineer if you guys, you know, are not prepared to tell me. But, I mean, you're not talking about fencing or any kind of thing. I mean, what, what are you, what are you proposing?
We don't, we don't design, we review.
Is, is the board open to tying some of the phasing to the potential plans for eliminating the basins? If, if the society is able to do that, determines within a certain amount of time it's able to do that, it goes one way. If it doesn't determine that it can do that within a certain amount of time, they get landscaped. Is something along those, those lines an acceptable condition for us to come back with?
Mr. Teller?
I, I'd suggest to what Marnie was suggesting that let's go with the plan we have and if you're successful in securing a solution without the basins, come in and just amend the site plan the way others would do it, too. My guess is you would be met warmly with that kind of provision. But for now, all, all we can work on is what you're proposing now. But I, by, by all means, come in with an amendment later.
Okay. The other thing was-
Sorry, Mimi, just one last question if I may. So if, obviously, the, the previous plan was approved with these basins and some sort of mitigation around them. I'm presuming if that mitigation were mimicked, there would not be a problem?
I can't answer that question, I don't know what it was, but give it a shot. The next thing was some type of segmenting in the parking to designate the spaces in some way to prove that the the gravel parking lot works as far as erosion, dust, drainage, et cetera.
I, I believe Attorney Tellerman suggested not proving that it works, but imposing some sort of performance conditions on that. If it, you know, if there's dust issues in the future, a condition can say if there are dust issues in the future, you know, maintenance will be done to, to deal with that. But I think proving that dust is-
No, no, I, I think you're conflating two things.
Okay.
Certainly you need an O&M plan for future maintenance of a gravel parking lot. That's pretty straightforward. I think what the Chair is saying is that we still need some demonstration, hopefully just from the 2019 reports, which are not before the planning board, that this will actually drain. The maintenance of the gravel surface is a different question and that could be dealt with easily by some kind of proposal for annual maintenance of some kind of the gravel parking lot through dragging, resurfacing, whatever.
So that's what I thought you said. She had said with respect to dust and erosion, she didn't say drainage. So I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same topics here.
I think she said she wants it to work.
Yeah.
You know, I'd, I'd still like to get back to what the standard actually is because, you know, we've submitted drainage cal, not drainage calcs, the full calcs, but a statement from our engineer saying it is his belief that this current system does in fact work. So what beyond that can we provide?
So there were the, the, the list from Fussin' O'Neill?
Yes, I can easily provide those, those items.
Yeah.
If, if that's it, then I'm in total agreement.
And then note number four removed. Snow storage added. Was there anything else?
I had that we would add in some commentary around the 36 times per year, 72 events.
Okay.
Some statement.
Could, could I maybe-
Sure.
Add something there? I kind of stayed quiet on that one. What we would typically do, I mean, that's a roughly once-a-week kind of event. And I would say any event that exceeds the parking capacity, you would have a pretty simple condition there that they ensure that there's adequate means for parking elsewhere and maybe coordinate that as, as needed with the, with the police department. You guys aren't going to be watching the store on, on parking, but if there's going to be overflow and those spaces can't be accommodated, depending on the kind of event, then there should be some means of tracking. By all means, hold events. And, you know, but 36 times a year is a, is a decent amount. So I think there should be some means of ensuring through the local public safety crew that there's going to be adequate means to handle what may be, some events may not have a lot of parking, some may have hundreds of cars. So on a case-by-case basis to work, some kind of condition that has them work that out with the public safety office.
We're totally amenable to that and I also want to say that we have a phased scheme for this. I think the first-year events are 12, the next-year events are 20. You know, as, again, 36 is aspirational. We have a brand-new facility, we have to, we're working with the Southborough Council on the Arts. We have a whole set of programming to design. I mean, this isn't, you know, this isn't going to open like a new car dealership where there's an empty lot one day and then 500 cars on the lot the next day. So I, I think we do have some time and I'm happy to work with our new police chief. Have great relations there, so thank you.
And Michael, this is Marnie. I think it's just that clarity that you just provided is not in any other document. So I think just providing that phased approach, that's the, you know, this is the best guess that we have. I think that's all we're seeking and then to add the language around the conditions.
That's fine, thanks, Marnie.
Anyone else? Mr. Dennington?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Andrew Dennington from the Select Board. I would like to request that as a condition of any approval of this site plan that the planning board makes sure that the parking spaces which are reserved for the town are in fact- town are in fact designated and that there's signage, um, put in place there. And the reason why my ears perked up in hearing that is, you know, I was part of the Select Board when we considered over multiple hearings, um, uh, whether to, under the terms of the right of the first refusal, to permit, uh, the sale, um, to the Historical Society. And just to refresh my memory, I pulled up the minutes from these meetings. So just to be clear on how important this was to the Select Board at this time, you can see at the, in the minutes of the August 26, 2022, um, meeting, you'll see a pretty detailed discussion, particularly from myself and Ms. Malinowski, about, uh, wanting to ensure that the language and the deed about, uh, preserving these parking spaces and having signage was finally, um, accomplished. And then when we approved, um, releasing, um, the, um, or deciding not to execute the right of first refusal in the minutes in, um, September 7, 2022, there were, so there were two separate motions after this lengthy discussion. One was to release, uh, to vote to not exercise the right of first refusal. And the second was specifically, Ms. Cook moved to request that the Southport Historical Society immediately install appropriate signs at their expense, that's the society, in the parking lot at 40 Central Street, designating the 12 spaces set aside for South Borough residents' use upon completion of the parking lot construction improvements. So that was, and that passed five, nothing. So that was in September of 2022, and it still has not happened. And, I heard Mr. Wei Shen say that he intends to come to the Select Board and request some further modification of this condition, which we unanimously voted in favor. That's the first I've heard of that. So I just want to mention that is that the suggestion of some future meeting where the Select Board might try to release that, don't credit the, the suggestion that there's going to be a future meeting is that, that there's any appetite for that whatsoever. So that's why I think there's really an opportunity here to finally, um, confirm this. And if we don't, I just see it drifting and drifting. And from the importance, you know, from this perspective of, you know, someone that has young kids and you play at the Fayetteville, um, playground, sometimes those parking spaces that are going, um, you know, towards Oak Hill Road are, everyone's already parked there, you're looking for a park space. Now that there's going to be this expansion of the parking lot, it's important to comply with, you know, the benefit that the town got as part of the original, um, a sale of this parcel back to, I think, Mr. Deli Briscoli some time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennington.
Mimi, may I respond to that, please?
Does it require a response?
Yeah, I think it's a little inaccurate. Um,
So, Michael, we're not going to debate this. We're just discussing what we're looking for the next hearing.
Well, again, you know, Mr. Dennington has asked us, uh, you know, essentially tried to impose a restriction on this, which we've already agreed to, but we've also raised some sub-serious substantial issues about who's going to plow those spaces, who's going to maintain them, who's going to ensure them, who's going to light them. Is this a town expense? None of this was delineated. So, you know, we're happy to do this. And as a matter of fact, we're happy to turn over the entire parking lot on some days if that's, there's a big event or whatever. So we really want to be a good neighbor here. And I, I don't want the board to have, uh, get the impression that we're trying to be in any way exclusive here. But we have some serious concerns about how to implement this legally without taking on a huge legal responsibility, which was frankly, not delineated in a very clearly executed and worded document. So, um, I think we have some work there. But I'm, as I said, the society is really happy to be here, and we're going to work and get this done. So that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Teller.
I, I'm not going to get into a debate on the, the 12 parking spaces, but I also can imagine that your site plan approval wouldn't have a condition that the parking lot shall be completely clear with adequate snow storage, not 75% or 65% clear. That's pretty standard fare. So he can discuss liability on another forum. I don't think that's your forum, but I can't imagine for public safety you would have anything less than keeping that parking lot clear in the event of snow.
Thank you. You may.
Okay. The motion is to extend the public hearing for 40-42 Central Street History and Arts Center, major site plan approval to our next meeting on Monday, July 10th, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Luttrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Hulian, yes.
Demurya, yes.
So thank you all and good night. I think we're done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wei Shen and Mr. Russell. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, excuse me. Mr. Tellerman, is, you're, is, you're going to remain here for the proposed St. Mark's, um, mitigation agenda item. Is that correct?
The one after the A and R?
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm here and happy to chat about it. I think there are other folks here with me as well.
The discussion I'm having with the chair is whether or not to take these items out of order perhaps, to move the discussion for the proposed St. Mark's, uh, park trees and stonewall mitigation, move that ahead of the A and R. Is that what, we have two members of the Select Board here in person. Is that what you're here for?
My guess is they're here for both, but...
You're here for both? Really? I made an assumption that was incorrect then. I retract my request.
Okay. Oh, no worries.
There's a request for a biologic break.
We're going to take your two minutes.
Make a motion for a two-minute recess.
All in favor, Luttrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Hulian, yes.
Demurya, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Raise you down there.
I know.
Great. So, we're back. Ms. Broschew is back. Next item on the agenda is A and R, St. Mark's Street Intersection at Marlboro Road. Karina?
So, we've received an application from the Select Board's office, actually Mark Purple signed the application, for an A and R for the parcels at St. Mark's Street Intersection at Marlboro Road, map 54 parcel eight. And this is related to the land swap that was approved at the annual town meeting. And the plan was submitted, the VHB who prepared the plan provided some minor revisions to the plan just for clarity and for consistency with the process. And I checked the deeds and the, all the instructions and requirements for an A and R and everything appears to have, is satisfactory from my perspective. And we did thoroughly review it.
Thank you, Karina. Mr. Stein?
The part that I found a little bit unusual about this A and R is that it seems to have a proposed street running through one of the lots. Am I mistaken?
Well, I'm not sure which, the proposed street isn't shown, the proposed new street is not shown.
Well, but if you continue where it says St. Mark's public variable width.
Oh, this.
Right. And then you follow the top line and it intersects and continues with the proposed lot line. That proposed lot line is in effect part of a, part of a proposed street.
I'm not sure which proposed lot line you're talking about, Jesse.
Would you like the pointer?
Here. That is, is part of that, which is a street.
That's right. The discontinuance is, the discontinued portion of the road is one lot, which is labeled Lot D. Lot B, no, Lot E is going to be, is being retained by the town and is likely to become part of the layout of the reconfigured roadway.
Which, so that's the part that's confusing. This, isn't there going to be a roadway?
There will be eventually, yeah.
So, that's, that's a new one on me. I don't remember doing an A and R where we knew there was going to be a street going through one of the lots in the future.
Well, we're not there yet on that. I mean, there will, that's going to be a part of a separate process for creation of a roadway and acceptance of it at a town meeting. We're just not there yet. Right now, we're just dividing into five little component parts so that we can get to, get to work on the project. That will be something that the Select Board will be seeking the Planning Board's report on before you.
Okay. Okay, so, so, so for my purposes, St. Mark's Street dead ends. Right?
Yes.
St. Mark's Street dead ends and, and that's all I need to worry about as a Planning Board member?
Right. Correct.
All right. Karina, does that sound legit to you or?
It does in a sense that if you recall, like when we did the Dell EMC Washington Street and they came in with an A and R, and the A and R had to be signed by both Westboro Planning Board and Southboro because it was across that, the town line. There were several small parcels that were being shifted because there was going to be a discontinuance of the old Washington Street and the new Washington Street was laid out that intersected with Coslin right there. So, this plan is showing lot lines. So, there is a lot here, Lot A. Lot E is just another piece that will be, what is, what is the term? Not mitigated, but it will be, what's the legal term?
Conveyed.
Say, say that again?
Conveyed.
Oh, conveyed, conveyed. But not just conveyed, but it'll be cured when a roadway is designed through roadway acceptance. So, another plan is going to come through for roadway acceptance.
But Lot E has no frontage at the moment.
It doesn't, none of, none of the lots have frontage as required under zoning.
We sure about that?
Well, they do. So, A does and B does, but it's not a buildable lot because it doesn't have.
They're all marked unbuildable.
Yeah. So, if you look in the notes, so you take each lot for what it is, it's really just partitioning the lots so that this Lot A is going to be town-owned in the future. And that town-owned Lot A will eventually have the roadway laid out in it. What you're seeing is the right side of the roadway. In the future, when the road is accepted, it will become a right-of-way through there, but it's still, it will still be town property. So, the park area and the town, future town road are on that same lot right now. And you have to partition out what was the former St. Mark's Street. And that little piece that's Lot E is actually going to become the beginning of the new roadway when that roadway is laid out.
See, that's the part that, that, that there's more confusion then. Because we're talking about Lot E having frontage on something that doesn't exist yet.
Can I?
No, we're not.
Interject here. So, Lot E was never discontinued. So, Lot E is still part of the road. Is part of, is part of the existing roadway. So, the discontinuance started at the curved lot line. So, that small.
So, why is there a line then between St. Mark's public variable width street and Lot E?
Because.
There should not be a line on the plan at that point by what, by what you just said, sir.
Lot E is currently owned by the town. Lot D is currently owned by the town but is to be conveyed to St. Mark's. So, we had to separate it out. Lot A is currently owned by St. Mark's and we had to cleave that off of other St. Mark's property, particularly Lot B. So, it would, so it would have its separate legal existence to be conveyed to the town. St. Mark's is going to retain Lot B.
Is there any way to delineate the lots? It is very difficult for me to understand what lot is what.
I mean, there's lot lines there.
There are, but it's very difficult to see. And it, like, I can't tell the difference between, so E looks like basically an isosceles triangle in the middle of the road. What is D? Is it the road?
D is the road.
Like, it would just be like color-coded or something where it's just very difficult for me to comprehend this whole thing.
Color-code for the purposes of recording an A and R.
But usually when people come in with an A and R, they do have a visual for the Planning Board.
So, Karina, Lot C seems to have the frontage. And that is going to be retained by the town?
Yes.
Okay. And you have Lot D, that seems to have the frontage also, but that's going to be conveyed to St. Mark's. Right, so far?
Yep.
Okay. Then you have Lot B, that seems to have the frontage. That is also going to be, or that's going to be retained by St. Mark's.
Right. That, and Lot D and E, Lot D and B will be the future parking lot.
Right.
That's proposed. And the town will keep Lot C.
So, Lot, okay, so Lots D and B then come up against Lot E at that point there.
Immediately on conveyance, Lot E by operation of law merges with Lot A.
I mean, I think that the hard, it is confusing, but all the lots make sense to me except Lot E.
Well, I mean, it's a lot.
It's a lot with what appears to be insufficient frontage.
Well, it doesn't have to have frontage for it to be subject to an A and R endorsement, though. As long as it's not a lot as defined for building purposes. Note five shows that none of these lots are for building purposes. None of them would meet the other requirements of zoning in any event. So, in the case law, in particular, Creconis versus Drakeit say that if no lot isn't, if a lot isn't intended for building purposes, then an A and R lies anyway. The fact that we have had a quick frontage on a few of these lots is somewhat, you know, it, it's helpful to understand it from an A and R perspective, but it's not required for the A and R purpose. So.
Yeah, I think we've done that before. We've had little pieces of lots that are taken off one lot and are going to be added to another.
More, more frequently what you would see is on the lot itself, not a building lot. So, it'd be here. Here, none of the lots are proposed for building lots. So, we have a note on the plan. The cases say, okay, you can do this, you just can't, there can't be any subterfuge. So, as potential buyers, obviously no one's selling this on the open market because none of them are really marketable. But you have to at least explain on the plan, which we have, that none of them are for building purposes. And the definition of lot under the subdivision control law is that they are for building purposes. So, the, the cases suggest if you're not building on them, then they can be approved as lots under the A and R process.
And somehow you have to have a line there that shows that E is staying with the town, but D, the rest of the old road, is going to St. Mark's.
We don't, that's just more for explanation.
That's what, yeah, but I'm just saying that's why you show that arc, that's why it kind of looks weird. But somehow you have to define what's going to St. Mark's and what's going to the town. And that, that Lot E is part of that picture.
The, the, the two conveyances that are proposed only relate to Lot A and Lot D. The others are all staying in their current ownership, the other three lots. The only two properties that are being bought and sold, or not bought and sold, but being conveyed to the other property are, are A and D. And then you'll see St. Mark's at some point ostensibly for site plan approval for, for parking at some future time. And then you'll see us either, you know, both later on this evening and then as our plans develop both for the roadway and for park plans, we'll be sure to discuss both of those with the, with the Planning Board. The Planning Board obviously has an official duty with respect to new roadways to give a recommendation to the Select Board in advance of the layout process. That's still out there in front of us. Maybe it'll happen next spring, maybe this, but more likely next spring for the layout of a new roadway there.
And as an aside, I did speak with Rob Kuklowitz of St. Mark's CFO, and he indicated that they were targeting August 28th for the site plan application for the parking area, anticipated.
Ms. Houlihan?
My only question is the stone wall, the proposed lot line, is that which side of the stone wall?
Which one?
The one on Lot C.
So, Lot C, that's, that was the surveyed lot. That's the existing stone wall that St. Mark's built?
Yeah, I know. But where, where does the lot line fall? In the stone wall or on the side that's?
It kind of meanders. So, that, this is where it's surveyed and that's where the existing.
So, who owns the stone wall at the end of this A and R?
The town, I would say the town.
You would say or is it confirmed?
It's basically on the lot line going around the corner. The section in front along Marlboro Road would be owned by the town.
That's clear. It's just not clear on this delineation who would own the stone wall.
If the plan is small scale here, the A and R, the full size might show it clearer because we just use these for desktop.
Yeah. Can, can we just see that? Because I think that's kind of an important component for maintenance of the town.
Marnie, can I just ask, are you referencing the stone wall to the south side?
No, to the north side on the Lot C.
Okay. Perfect. I just wanted to make sure I was clear. Thank you.
I would say the, it is the, it's going to serve as the lot parcel.
It looks like it's variable on both sides of the actual surveyed lot line.
And so, what are the expectations the town has offered? Are we required to maintain, maintain that stone wall when it becomes our property?
Are we required?
Is that, yeah. So, if that's on our, that's a town, if that meanders, who's taking responsibility for just the?
Well, the portions of it that are on our property makes it our responsibility. I imagine the rest of that could come up during review of the parking by St. Mark's when they get before you. No one's touching the stone wall right now.
Jay, can I just ask a question on the stone wall? There was a license agreement put in place with the town to build the stone wall. And I believed, and I could be wrong, it was before I got on the Board of Selectment, but I know that there was a license agreement. And I thought the maintenance of that stone wall fell onto St. Mark's. I could be completely wrong, but there is a license agreement out there for that.
Before my time as well.
Mine too.
So, I, I, it was one of my questions. So, it's a limited revocable license that we licensed to St. Mark's. And my question was exactly that. We said, thank you, is, does that license go away with this now? Or what happens to the revocable license? Does it revoke?
Well, I'd, I'd have to review its terms, Debbie. I don't think that there's a termination clause in the event. I doubt they contemplated this at the time. My guess is, I mean, at the time, it would have been entirely on the town's.
Was your name on it?
I was on it.
Property. So, the fact that they were maintaining it, I mean, the license until it's revoked, unless there's an automatic revocation there, then the license likely would stay. But I'd have to look at its terms. You're, I'm working at a disadvantage because you have the language and I don't.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send it to you. So, it says a licenser reserves the right to review, revoke, rescind, blah, blah. Hundred and twenty days notice.
I assume the licensor being the town.
I think so, yeah.
And I stand corrected, I was on the board. I was actually chair then. So, that's kind of why I remember it. So.
Do you have anything else, Marnie? Mr. Maria?
Okay. So, I would like to know about the stone wall also because I think that is, is clear from the application that St. Mark's put in for this, that, that ended up with this limited revocable license, that we licensed the wall to St. Mark's. But I guess I would want to know because it appears to be on Lot C, unless Karina has seen different, that is it, does it, does it stay with Lot C? I mean, at some point, the thing's going to like start to crumble. And it'd be good to know who's responsible for it. Is it, is it St. Mark's property or is it the town's property? So, I actually would like some clarification. I have always been troubled actually by these lines that go right through the middle of a stone wall. I think that is, makes it really kind of unclear for these A and Rs. I mean, we've had this happen before where it's like, it's on the line, so is it in? Is it out?
It just, it is the way it exists. So, when we have the A and R plans, one of the instructions is that all above ground and below ground features are shown. So, that is how it is.
Right. We didn't choose this line to be meander through the stone wall. The, this line is, coincides with the layout, the original layout of St. Mark's. So, it's not like if, if we had our druthers, we probably would have had it on one side or the other. But this is a surveyed line based upon the former roadway layout, which was discontinued.
Okay. Yeah. And actually, so it looks different than the little path that's shown on the 2018 or 17 license agreement for the wall.
Yeah, this is a survey.
But this is surveyed. Okay. My second question is on my, the discontinuance of the road. So, my recollection is that only the portion of the current, well, we're calling it former St. Mark's Street has been discontinued. And this map here says this portion has been discontinued. I've had my eye on that for a long time because the town actually never discontinued that. And so, when that came up to Planning Board, I guess before town meeting, you guys would know, maybe remember, we entertained that matter and discussed discontinuing the road. The road that we received was the sort of the one that we've known for the last 10 years or something. But that, that portion that is C is the old discontinued road, but I believe we've never discontinued it. Am I correct?
Which was dis, but it was discontinued as part of the discontinuance of town meeting, as part of.
I, I don't believe so because the plan on file with the town clerk that I obtained, so the red and the blue, did not have that part C in it at all. And I have that photo, you know, that picture, we can bring it up. But you guys, you made it. So, it didn't have that part C at all, actually. The town, this is the plan on file. So, yes, it, it did happen at town meeting, but that portion of the old road that was discontinued somewhere around, well, I should say it was sort of abandoned.
Well, abandonment is different than discontinuing.
Yes.
So, those are very different concepts.
Okay. What is it actually? What's the right term for that? Because it was never formally discontinued. And I went back and I checked all of the town meetings.
Abandonment, well, there's a few things that it, that it could be. It could be either abandonment or just a reorientation of the paved width within the right-of-way.
Okay.
But an abandonment is a separate process that doesn't require a town meeting. It's just a cessation of the town's obligation to maintain.
Okay.
So, different, slightly different animal than a formal, like we're taking it off the rolls as a town road altogether.
And it's never been taken off the rolls.
But as now.
Well, I mean, when I went on Mass DOT, I guess that road is still there because it's never been like, I don't know.
That, you have, there's a, there's a process to discontinue stuff.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect Mass DOT to catch up too quickly.
So, just to confirm then, abandon is the correct word and I believe that this map is incorrect, that discontinuance planned by VHB doesn't include that little terminal, like tippy, tippy point because that, that wasn't part, that wasn't the plan that was, am I incorrect? Please tell me. But I don't believe that was, that was submitted.
So, this discontinuance plan that was here for reference, this VHB plan, that, that includes this little piece.
So, is that happening now?
Lot C.
Or it happened at town meeting?
No, this is, it happened at town meeting and the Select Board signs off on this. But this was just here for reference. But that does include that.
So, is it the plan on file at town meeting? Because it didn't include that.
Well, so the little plan on file with the red and the, I mean, that was a cartoon. It wasn't signed or anything.
An exhibit.
Or an exhibit. The Warren article, no, no, for a person who wants to go to town meeting and say, okay, what's the parcel of land?
I believe this was on file.
No, I've asked town clerk, this was not on file. I asked town clerk for a copy of what was on file to support Warren Article 12. And I actually just forwarded that to you today, Karina. And the, the plan that was given to me was the red and the blue version that ended with the, you know.
But, but that, that doesn't mean that both, that two different colors of it weren't getting discontinued.
I can, um.
But it's also not, I mean, it's a good discussion item, but it's really not, doesn't have anything to do with why we're here today.
It's just that, that's correct. It's just that the, the, the math is incorrect. The plan is, is incorrect, I believe.
This plan is not incorrect.
So.
The A and R plan is a surveyed A and R.
No, no, the, the wording around C is, I don't believe, and maybe that's just to be checked.
The wording is just a helpful descriptor. It's the lot lines. We're, we're just trying to help describe.
Okay. Because I don't like that we'd be approving a plan that the wording is incorrect.
No, no, there's no, no legal conclusion that anyone could draw from in terms of, we, we feel it's accurate for what the description is, but those descriptions are just for illustration purposes.
Okay.
And A and R just creates shapes. That's all.
Creates what?
Shapes.
Shapes. Okay.
So, I mean, there's a couple of things in my opinion that could be clarified. I think that's one of them. And I also think that the stone wall, there could be a notation on the plan in regards to the stone wall. And those would be very helpful. And.
But from a recorded lot perspective, I, I'm not disagreeing with you that they may be helpful in some process. But from what we're here for today, which is to set new, new lot lines.
So, we have to decide whether or not we want to endorse it.
Well, I mean, the endorsement is mechanical. So, I mean, we're, we're always happy to have discussions with St. Mark's and with anyone about the maintenance of stone walls. But this is about creating lot lines.
So, I, there's nothing that is illegal about a stone wall being half on a property and half on another. That's just the way it exists right now. And that's what's represented on the plan.
Well, it, it's the way it exists on the plan.
It was surveyed.
Previously to this plan, it was entirely on the town's property, albeit subject to certain obligations that were negotiated between the parties.
Right.
I, I think that we as the Board have to decide amongst ourselves whether or not we want to endorse the plan without.
So is it the plan on file at town meeting? Because it didn't include that.
Well, so the little plan on file with the red and the, that, I mean, that was a cartoon. It wasn't signed or anything.
An exhibit.
Or an exhibit.
The warrant article, no, no, for a person who wants to go to town meeting and say, okay, what's the parcel of land?
I believe this was on file.
No, I've asked town clerk, this was not on file. I asked town clerk for a copy of what was on file to support warrant Article 12, and I actually just forwarded that to you today, Karina. And the, the plan that was given to me was the red and the blue version that ended with the, you know.
But, but that, that doesn't mean that both, that two different colors of it weren't getting discontinued.
I can, um.
But it's also not, I mean, it's a good discussion item, but it really not, doesn't have anything to do with
It's just that
Why we're here today.
That's correct. It's just that the, the, the math is incorrect. The plan is, is incorrect, I believe.
This plan is not incorrect.
So.
The A and R plan is a surveyed A and R.
No, no, the, the wording around C is, I don't believe, and maybe that's just
The wording is just a helpful descriptor. It's the lot lines. We're, we're just helping, trying to help describe.
Okay. Because I don't like that we'd be approving a plan that the wording
No, no, there's no
Is incorrect.
No legal conclusion that anyone could draw from in terms of, we, we feel it's accurate for what the description is, but those descriptions are just for illustration purposes.
Okay.
And A and R just creates shapes. That's all.
Creates what?
Shapes.
Shapes, okay.
So, I mean, there's a couple of things, in my opinion, that could be clarified. I think that's one of them. And I also think that the stone wall, there could be a notation on the plan in regards to the stone wall, and those would be very helpful. And
From a recorded lot perspective, I, I'm not disagreeing with you that they may be helpful in some process, but from what we're here for today, which is to set new, new lot lines.
So we have to decide whether or not we want to endorse it.
Well, I mean, the endorsement is mechanical. So, I mean, we're, we're always happy to have discussions with Saint Marks and with anyone about the maintenance of stone walls. But this is about creating lot lines.
So I, there's nothing that is illegal about a stone wall being half on a property and half on another? That's just the way it exists right now, and that's what's represented on the plan.
Well, it, it's the way it
It was surveyed.
On the plan.
Yeah.
Previously to this plan, it was entirely on the town's property, albeit subject to certain obligations that were negotiated between the parties.
Right.
I, I think that we, as the board, have to decide amongst ourselves whether or not we want to endorse the plan without the clarification on it of the stone wall and with the, I agree with you, Mr. Maria, that the language is incorrect in regards to lot C. And we just need to decide whether or not we want to endorse it.
What would be the grounds for non-endorsement, though, Jesse?
Because, because there's, I, in my, it's, I have actually, I can't recall off the top of my head, but I think we have requested adjustments to plans in the past and gotten them on A and Rs.
And, you know, I certainly don't want to say you're wrong, but what I recall is like, if we had lots that came to a point, and those are not lots that, like, they'd be like cone-shaped, and they're not real conducive to proper lot layout, or whatever, or a circle doesn't pass, or something like that, because they're proposing, they have frontage, and they have area, not that that's part of the A and R, where a lot could be buildable. So when those instances happen, the planning board suggested, can you, you know, move that lot line over so you don't have this weird property line where it's confusing later who owns what to the
Okay, I see your point.
Actual person who lives there.
So you're saying, basically, that the stone wall and the discontinuance is really not
It's a reference to the plan. It's not actually required probably by the Registry of Deeds to be on there. They probably prefer not to see that. But town code in Southborough says you need to show those things. So if your septic is on there, you can say, you're making it too close to the property.
I have one more.
You show features to
Yeah, we're just trying to be, trying to be helpful to, for descriptive purposes and references, yeah.
Ms. Maria?
I just have one more point. Thanks for the clarification. Okay. So again, the plan that was on file for warrant, to support warrant Article 12 showed, which I understand was a schematic, but it's what the town voted on, town property transferred to Saint Marks was, is, was estimated, I guess, to be 16,134 square feet. And then the A and R plan before us is 16, is exactly 500 square feet off. It's 16,634 square feet, which is that more that we would be conveying slightly more than we anticipated and indicated at town meeting. And so I just wanted to ask Greg, where is that 500 square feet coming from? Is this one of these point things that Karina was just talking about?
More exacting survey information. I mean, that's why we use terms like approximate in, in town meeting votes. It's just, we fine tuned it down at the end of the day.
But, I mean, I would, yes, yes, it's from the various points where we decided to tie those in from a survey, from a surveyed standpoint.
Thank you. Thanks.
Ms. Brascio.
So, and again, Jesse, I know, I think you're going to make a motion. Was that what I heard? So I don't know that
No, it's your turn first.
It's my turn first. Okay, so I guess
I spoke out of order, sorry.
No, that's okay. So my, I guess my question to Jay would be, obviously, the, the stone wall is, is, and I understand it's just on the plans for a reference, but how do we then find out and suggest through the, through the select board to make sure who has ownership as far as, as liability and maintenance on the stone wall? Is that something that typically would be done after the fact? Or is it, can we condition the A and R based on that?
So you, so you can't condition A and Rs.
Okay.
But again, I, I think that we're certainly happy to have the conversation with Saint Marks.
Okay.
But you forget, Saint Marks is going to be coming to you with a project that is bordered
Correct.
Part by a stone wall, which you would have plenty of grounds to speak with them about in terms of maintenance. And in the meantime, we'll certainly, and we have nothing proposed for lot C.
Right.
Perhaps maybe drainage, I don't know, anything. So we're comfortable with whatever with respect to the use of the, the stone wall, continued use of that stone wall. And whoever's going to maintain, and we're comfortable with their continuing maintenance of it pursuant to a condition on a zoning approval, or for
Okay.
A continuing vitality of the license. No one has mentioned getting rid of the license or not maintaining a stone wall. I know of zero intentions to get rid of it, but they would have to get, you know, that would likely come up during the site plan approval anyway.
Okay. So I would just suggest, maybe Andrew and Kathy, while you're here, if we could just have Jay look at the license, just to make sure that we're clear on the stone wall. Thank you.
And I have nothing. Oh, Ms. Houlihan.
I'm just curious, is an A and R appealable?
By whom?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just curious because
Anything's appealable technically.
Okay.
But it's, A and Rs are so mechanical, there's not, it's not a discretionary function. So you're either right or you're wrong on an A and R. There's no like, you don't impose conditions. If it doesn't show a subdivision, it has to be endorsed. So some, yes. Is there case law where people have appealed A and Rs either approved or denied? Sure. Does the court apply some kind of reasonableness standard? No, they don't. It's either you're right or you're wrong. And that's whether you appeal, because your neighbor A and R'd their beautiful property into 20 lots, or I tried to appeal and I didn't get it, and said they owed it to me, which happens sometimes.
Okay. And the question just comes back to this, this, that, like nagging thing around the town ward. That was five, there's a 500 square foot differential, and I, it's
Instead of approximate.
Excuse me, I don't think your microphone's working, because I got a notice that they can't hear you on the thing. Is it on?
It's on.
It's on, okay. Maybe it was just a little, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? So in the past, what has the planning board done when there are slight inaccuracies? Unfortunately, the plan that went, you know, supported the warrant article, didn't say approximate, but then again, it wasn't surveyed. So what about these little reference things?
So an A and R is very cut and dry. It's, it either is or it isn't. Is it a subdivision? No. Then it's an A and R unless there, it doesn't meet the requirements for the A and R. So whether it meets the, you know, warrant article or not is irrelevant to endorsing an A and R.
Okay. What about the inaccuracies? Whether something's been discontinued, or it's questionable about the stone wall?
So I'm not going to suggest that there's been an inaccuracy at all, but to the extent that there's an inaccuracy in a plan that governed a discontinuance, that still has nothing to do with the A and R, that might result in a conclusion that perhaps there's a sliver of property that wasn't technically discontinued, that maintains part of a, of a public roadway layout, but that doesn't change the fact that there's a surveyed plan before you that shows lot lines that is, we're asking for an endorsement of. I, I mean, that, again, kind of a question for another forum. I, I don't think there's been an inaccuracy on the discontinuance, but to the extent there was, that's a kind of a debate for another forum.
You want to make a motion?
Sure. Motion is to endorse the approval not required. Saint Marks Street intersection of Marlboro Road is submitted.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we, I think we're hoping to get this on record. So is the, the Mylars, I guess, at the end of your evening? Is that when you do it normally?
Yeah, yeah. Next item on the agenda, proposed Saint Marks park and tree stone wall mitigation. So I had asked that this be on the agenda. And to, to just give some background on how we got here, this Saint Marks triangle and the, the road and discontinuance and the park, there was a lot of contention over and a lot of laws were ignored, not followed through on. In, on January, in an attempt to create a path forward, I had met with the town planner, select board chair at the time, Ms. Brascio was there, and town administrator. And we agreed to a path forward, which included the, the discontinuance and the relocation coming to the planning board for a report as required in Mass General Law. Also to have a hearing on the trees and stone walls that, that were removed, even though that was after the fact. And also to submit the park for slight, site plan approval. And in the Dropbox, you'll see emails in, in minutes that refer to that. Then at the five, May 2nd, scenic, what do we have? We had a tree hearing, and hearing on the stone wall removal. And the mitigation presented to the planning board was that the trees and stone wall removed would be replaced in the new park. And the park would come before the planning board for site plan approval, as an assurance that that mitigation was followed through with. Then, a couple of weeks ago, when Karina was working trying to get this A and R correct, there were some emails from town council saying that he didn't believe that the park required site plan approval. And I, and then there were emails back and forth that, you know, there was never any agreement, but the select board would be happy to present the plan to the planning board informally, which I don't understand, because I've never, I haven't heard from the select board on this. I haven't seen it on their agenda. It's not in any of their minutes. So the, the question is, it appears that the park's not coming before the planning board for site plan approval. So how do we assure that the mitigation that was promised us happens, that was in accordance with the agreement? The park doesn't show any stone walls, and there is a stone wall on the proposed new Saint Marks Street, but it's only 80 feet, not 100, which is required. So we don't know where we go from here.
It appears that Ms. Cook has something to say. I'm going to withhold any comments until after a year from the select board member.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, Mimi, I did try to call you about a week ago. The first I heard about the need to not have major site plan review was very recently. Last week or so, I saw some emails going back and forth between Jay and Karina, et cetera. So until then, I thought that major site plan review was required. Not because I know what the details are of major site plan review, because I can assure you I don't. So the meeting we had that you described, I had asked for the meeting. The purpose was to make it clear exactly what the steps were before town meeting that required planning board jurisdiction, approval, et cetera. And you may recall in that meeting, we did talk about major site plan review, and it was Karina and you that said it was required because of the size of the project. We went over the, I believe, 2,000 square foot. But I would never have said, "I agree," because I don't know when major site plan review was required. So I don't know what's in the minutes or what heard later. Select board never had a discussion about major site plan review. There may have been a report from either myself, maybe Andrew, but probably me, saying, "These are the things we have to do," because that's what we talked about at that meeting. But we never agreed to do something that wasn't required, because I wouldn't have known that it wasn't required. It was Karina and you that said it was point-blank required. So I took that at face value. We went forward thinking we had to have major site plan review for this park. Mr. Talaman has told us recently that's not true. So I can't get into the debate whether it's true or not. That's for Mr. Talaman to talk to, I guess, you guys about, and Karina. So I don't know tonight what is required for major site plan review. So this idea that the select board agreed to it, I think that verb is wrong. We discussed it with you, and you told us it was required, so I assumed it was required. So we had our list that day, we left with it, and we thought it was required. So nothing has happened since then to change what I'm saying, other than Mr. Talaman was told that we thought we had to have major site plan review, and he said, "I, I disagree. You don't," and went over the, the reasons. So again, I can't debate major site plan review. I just know that because I can't, that day was done to list out the things we needed to do, including the stone wall, including the trees, mitigation, et cetera, just to make sure it was clear what those steps were. And I left there thinking that major site plan review was required, not that we had agreed to do something that was not required. So maybe this is semantics, but
So I believe it is, and I still believe it is. And we move forward on that path.
But why would we agree to do something that's not required?
I'm saying that I believe that it is.
Okay, well, see, that, okay, so I can't debate that. So that's why Mr. Talaman's here. Andrew took a look at the, the rules a few minutes ago. I don't, I think he thinks it's not required. So I'm going to step back and let Mr. Talaman take over and talk to you, talk to Karina as far as that goes, so we can decide whether it is or not. If it is, obviously, we'll do it. If it's not, what Andrew and I have talked about is, we're happy to have the planning board take a look at these plans, but we're under a really extreme time deadline right now. We signed the P and S today, it's done. We were supposed to, we're supposed to close by July 7th, that's our deadline, so the contractor could come back immediately, because the contractor has been promised they can come back and finish the work that is under their purview. They have told us previously that unless they can get all this work done at one time, which is right now, then they are going to do a change order and not finish the, the road piece of it. So we're just trying to keep moving forward here. So I would suggest that Mr. Talaman and talk to you guys as far as when it is required and when it's not, because that's not me.
So we got in this mess because we were pushing things and trying to do things fast, and that's how trees and stone walls came down, a road got started without any report from the planning board. So evidently, lessons haven't been learned, because we're back in the same place again, chasing a deadline.
May I say something?
Is there any other comment from the board before we take public comment?
Well, I, my confusion is the part of the code, maybe, Karina, maybe you can clarify from your perspective, if you don't mind. Because
I'll try.
Thanks.
So when town council and I were corresponding back and forth, and I provided a list of different areas of the code, which I felt applied, one of the things that stood out to me is section 174-8C1 at the very beginning of the zoning code, that all uses in buildings for which off-street parking, oh, no, that's not the one, I'm sorry. It was, hold on a second. Yeah, that's it. All uses in buildings for which off-street parking is required other than one and two-family dwellings shall be subject to site plan review and approval by the planning board. And then whether it was a change of use, or any non-residential development that results in an increase in onsite parking, various things like that. So it's my understanding that So, it's my understanding that this would be a recreational use or public assembly. And so, and I, and I know you, but let me just, let me get my thought out, because it's tough for me. So, zoning enforcement officer, who is the building commissioner, in the code, it says he interprets the use and the parking, the related parking requirement for what he interprets the use to be. So, I sent an email to Case Burlingame, the new building commissioner, asking him to opine if he felt that the park is a use that requires parking. Okay? And I understand that the library's right there, and the town owns that, and there may be avenues to park there, whatever. But that's where I'm at right now, and I don't think he had a chance to respond to that. But as code enforcement officer, I felt that he would be the one who would say, "That's a recreation use. It requires X amount of spaces." And I know it says per seat, et cetera, but seat kind of has a, you know, there are park benches there, and it, it's a walking trail, whatever, you know, there's different aspects of it. So, he would be the one to maybe interpret that. So, in these various things, I felt that site plan is required.
Yeah, I guess I would agree. I mean, it is a change of use, and it could generate a need for parking, so by that definition, I agree with your interpretation of the code.
Ms. Houlihan.
Yeah, I'm kind of really saddened by this conversation, and this is where this has come. I think we've learned over so many years how important collaboration is across all of the boards. This is in a precise moment where I would, if I was in the private and not serving on this board, ask for independent counsel after the building inspector come. And this is exactly the reason why planning board should have independent counsel. I believe that this is also in, follows all uses, and it's this recreational and assembly. Yes, I'm not a lawyer, but that's why we should have the privilege to be represented by independent counsel. This is just so frustrating. And that plan doesn't even have a stone wall on it.
Mr. Muria.
This is the gem of our town, and I think one of the reasons that it became a debacle is because it skipped many of the checks and balances that we have in place. Remember, there were no public hearings. There were public comments that were accepted at various boards, including select board, and planning board, and the St. Mark's Group Working Park Committee. But this, I think, I mean, I agree that, you know, we've heard things like, you know, Perkins is coming on Monday, we're going to have shovels in the ground after town meeting, and this has been a debacle. We have a residential A property that's being conveyed and has not a tree and not a stone wall. When I attended one of the St. Mark's Park Working Groups meetings, they did not have a plan that had the correct amount of footage that was agreed upon, 100, I guess, linear feet on the stone wall, and did not have the requisite number of trees. And if town planners don't get involved, this is, this is what's going to happen. The chair of that committee, by the way, said, "Oh, don't worry about it. When it goes out to bid, it will have the correct stone wall." No, I don't think so. If it's not on a plan, it doesn't get done. I think that this should be on a plan, and it should come to the planning board. We know that this triangle area has had a lot of activity, a lot of difficulty, and a crazy past, let's just say, especially in the last, you know, couple of years. And I think that, you know, we have to stop the craziness. And I do think that we should just take the time, have it come to the planning board, and make sure that it has what, you know, the town has agreed would be, you know, needed. We're also, I have no assurance right now that we're following Mass General Law really, I mean, you know, if you remember, it was me that was pushing to make sure that we were having a tree hearing for those trees that were taken down, and also stone wall. And there were other sides of the street and stone walls that we didn't have a tree hearing for. And really, nobody in town, not the select board members, really, nobody is looking after this part of our town. And I think it's the, you know, beloved part of town. It's, it's the gem of our town. I think we should take the time, whether or not it's required, bring it to the select board as promised, and please don't skip the, sorry, planning board, please don't skip planning board just because you're able to save a couple of days. I think that's been a debacle and a bad decision by the select board in the past. Thank you.
Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. I guess my question is going to be for Jay. So, why do you believe that site plan isn't required, based on the comments that have been made here tonight, as far as use, as far as theaters, parking, recreation? I would just be curious to hear why you're in such a different mindset than the board and Karina as well.
So, I want to state as a preface that this is not the first time that I said site plan isn't required. I've said that previously. Regardless, on the issue, the only potential hook to site plan, the only potential trigger is 174-12E7, theaters, membership clubs. The language says this, theaters, membership clubs, and places of amusement, recreation, and assembly, public or private, one space per four seats. That clearly contemplates a structural element where there is going to be formal seating. This is a park space that is adjacent to the library. There's no seating, there's no assembly required. It's simply a landscape space that people can enjoy. There's no, it is no band shell, there's no setup for permanent amusement or anything like that. It just is a square peg in a round hole.
Sorry, Mr. Talaman, I apologize.
Let me just finish. In my opinion, it just doesn't meet that requirement. That's my opinion. I was asked to give my opinion. I stand by that opinion. That's the, where I come out on this. And I see no other trigger. I'd state also that this property, as I said, as soon as it's conveyed, will merge with other property. It's not going to be, have its own separate existence from a zoning perspective anyway. So, it's going to be joined as a matter of law, even though there's a separate lot line for zoning purposes with the adjacent property, which also factors into that analysis. But it just doesn't meet 174-12E7, in my opinion.
There's no seating?
There's not, there's no seating for the purposes of assembly, amusement, or recreation.
What's the storytime area? And the artist rendering?
There are benches.
And there are benches in the granite plaza with historical markers.
I don't know what you were...
The storytime is grass, so it's just a, it's a lawn.
Lawn seating.
Lawn area for the library.
For people to assemble, for storytime.
But by that rationale, every piece of lawn in any public property would require parking. It just doesn't fit that definition, in my opinion. I'm sorry, Jesse, there's no attempt to, you know, and I'm not suggesting, first of all, I don't think that there's been a hurry up and wait. The town's been planning this project for a long time. I think the select board is more than happy to involve the planning board in the future planning and the amenities that you see on this plan, where, as I mentioned that when we spoke before, before the meeting started, and they stand by that, and I'm sure they would say just that. I just don't see the trigger for formal site plan review. It's just my opinion. There's no animus to it. It's just my opinion.
Are you all set? This is, Ms. Brascio? Yeah. So, I disagree, and with all due respect, you had said previously on this project that you are representing the opinion of the select board.
That's true.
So, you know, we're left to interpret the bylaw on our own, and I believe that site plan is required. And the first that I heard that there was a question to this was in the email to Karina. So, if you had said that previously, it never filtered down to this board. And my issue is not so much with, you know, required or not required, is that in good faith, I had a discussion to move this project forward. It had been very contentious, and we were trying to not look back, move forward. These are the steps that we need to take to keep this moving. And this board all honored that agreement. And now, at the 11th hour, the select board is saying, "Oh, by the way, planning board, your SOL, we're not coming before you for site plan review." Even though that's what was mentioned in the tree and stone wall hearing on May 2nd, it was said in the minutes by Ms. Cook that those trees and stone wall would be in the park plan, and the park plan would come before the planning board for site plan. Mr. Dunnington.
Okay. Well, I came to, I came to the microphone earlier just to clarify that there are two separate sets of plans prepared by VHB relating to two separate contracts that deal with stone wall work. And it's not only the set of plans that VHB prepared that show the park work, right? That's the set of plans that is going to, okay, go out to bid. There haven't been bids on it back, and that the select board voted to have an alternate bid for additional stone wall. But also, if you look at the, the VHB plans from, and I'm also going to, Greg, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, because this same discussion came up at the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group. Where do the plans show the replacement of stone wall? They're also depicted in the June, the June 2021 plans, sheet 88 of 144. You look, and there are, there's a notation in there in two different places, R and R, existing stone wall. Greg can speak to that in more detail, but that's showing where, for where the site looks right now, after the new St. Mark's Street Park is constructed, this shows to the, to the north of the new St. Mark's Street, bordering the proposed parking lot of St. Mark's, and then running along Route 85. That's, Greg, do you want to speak to this?
So, Route 85 is there. That stone wall is there.
So...
And the R and R is 80 feet that goes up the new proposed St. Mark's Road, which is not 100.
Okay, so, that's all I wanted to say, is just to make clear that there's two separate sets of plans, and that if you're looking only at the quote, "park plans," you're not looking at the whole picture. That's the only point I wanted to make there.
Ms. Luttrell.
Ms. Houlihan.
Yeah, I don't want to get distracted by plans. I want to get back to the site plan. I think it's just incomprehensible, Ms. Cook, as the select board chair, making this agreement prior to the changeover in chairs, that you made this commitment. We sat and joint tree hearings, and we talked about inclusion of a stone wall. We talked about inclusion of trees, and we talked about site plan. I think it's probably also what this town relied on when they voted at town meeting. And I just cannot comprehend that this is happening again, and that because there's such incredible rush, whether it's for money, I don't even know. I don't know why we're rushing to get this done, and the plans have to get done. To Mr. Muria's point earlier, this debacle happened because things got skipped. By ensuring that we review, this planning board reviews, I'm asking the select board, I'm not, and I would like to formalize this, for independent counsel.
So, Ms. Houlihan, if you were at a meeting and you were told something as fact, and you stated point-blank that this is not your area, you don't know what, when, and where major site plan review requires, and to make the decision that you made to list it as a requirement based on faulty information, you think that is correct? I don't. When I'm in a meeting, if someone gives me facts, and I make a decision, that's great. If they give me bad facts, and I go forward, then that decision, let me finish, you, you teachers. Yes, we are, we want to get this done, we think it's time. This has been on the table for two years now. We do think it's time. We're not rushing. Two years is not a rush at all. Nothing has been done intentionally. Again, I was told point-blank at that meeting, Ms. Brascio was here too, that major site plan was required. It was...
And I stand by that.
Okay, so you agree with that, right?
I agree that site plan is required. I stand by that.
Okay, but you also said it at that meeting, it was required. You didn't say, "Well, we're not sure..."
I'm not, I'm not not sure. I believe it's required.
And you said that the day?
And if you, I did.
Okay.
And I stand by that.
And I also said to you, Mimi, I have no idea when major site plan was...
So, if there was a question, you could have asked.
We talked about it.
In January. This is May.
This is the first time I have heard in the last couple of weeks that it's not required. I thought up until then that it was, based on what you and Karina said that day, period. Okay, well, as I said, I'm not, I couldn't debate it then, I can't debate it to now. You've heard what town council has said, as far as it not being required, that I have nothing, I can't do anything but rely on that, because I can't sit here and talk about whether 174, whatever, applies or not. But I take great issue with what Ms. Houlihan said. We have tried so hard to work with planning board, everybody we have, to get this park done. We have bent over backwards, including the day that I, I'm the one that asked for that meeting and said, "Let's sit down, and let's go through the things we did." And point-blank, major site plan review is required, not maybe, please do it anyway. And we sat here and said, "We want you to look at these plans. We want your input, but we still want to also get this project done. It's very important to get it done and move on. We've got lots of things in front of us going forward, so we're ready to put this one to bed."
Ms. Luttrell, is there a motion that I can make to formalize the request for independent counsel? I know it has to go to select board, but can I make a motion to request that the planning board obtain independent counsel and get approval from select board on this matter?
But, sorry, go ahead. I just have a question.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So, I guess what I'm trying to wrap my head around now is, town council's saying, "You don't need site plan." The board of selectmen, select board, excuse me, is saying, "Okay, we don't need site plan." So, what's, there's nothing, there's no trigger to stop the process from moving forward, right or wrong at this point. I'm just, is that correct, that the select board could just say, "Let's move forward," because site plan is not required? We were advised by council. So, if we get counsel, is that actually going to stop this or change anything from moving forward? And again, right or wrong, Marnie, I hear where you're coming from. I sat on the other side of the table through all this. I completely understand where you're coming from. I just don't know if it's going to stop anything from moving forward at this point. So, I guess that's a question to you.
I'm, I'm a little reluctant to get into hypotheticals, Lisa, but we have contractors ready to go with certain work. That doesn't mean the select board, as you just heard, is unwilling to have continued discussion on things that are internal in the park as this process unfolds, but there is an effort to move forward with the things that we have to move forward on, given construction schedules. So, we do intend to do that.
So, Andrew, I guess, let me ask you then. So, what you're looking for from the contractor for the park is just for the road at this point? Is that correct? They're not going to do any work on the park at this point. So, I guess, I'm kind of confused if we... to do any work on the park at this point. So I guess, I'm kind of confused if we say, okay, Planning Board, you'll have an opportunity to speak to this, but we're moving forward, and you're really not going to, because we're moving forward. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand the dynamics of this, so we can maybe find a way forward.
Okay, so here's my perspective on this. I do think it's, you know, Ms. Hulahan, I said, you know, you don't want to get bogged down in the, the plans. The plans are significant to this, because for the work that E. H. Perkins bid on, and that was the combined bid, right, with multiple different projects, including this project, they successfully bid. Because of all of the delays, they could have just completely backed out. But in circumstances that are favorable to the town, they're still in it, okay, and not looking to back out. And then if they backed out, the price would greatly increase. So we are on track. Yesterday, we had a, a meeting at which we, after a lot of hard work from Mr. Purple, Mr. Tallaman, the purchase and sale agreement with St. Mark's was agreed to. It was signed. Everyone came in and signed it today. So now we have a signed purchase and sale agreement with St. Mark's. There's a closing date of the 7th. Perkins completed recently the, the work, you know, of 85 South, okay. And that in terms of mobilization, et cetera, they can come back, and within the, the existing contract, which is favorable to the town, to come back. I heard from, from Mark that they wanted to come back as early as July 5th, and they, they have the control of, if this doesn't work for our schedule, then we, we can back out. My understanding is now they could come back the 10th. So it's just causes a lot of anxiety to, you know, keep having delays and delays and delays. But anyway, getting to your point, you're right. This is just about the roadway, and if you look at the plans that I was referencing that do show the, the stone wall mitigation of them, the June 2021 plans, that's part of the, the contract with Perkins, so that's underway, right? And then the park plans is a different set of plans, right? Because that's what took the, the circular space that had the pathways, was completely, took that out. Then we redid it, had a lot of meetings about that at the working group level. That was presented to the Select Board. And I definitely remember when there was a discussion of this in the context of the joint tree hearing, which was like a retroactive tree hearing, right, about St. Mark's, there being a discussion, and it being strongly recommended from the, that, you know, the, the chairs of the Select Board and the Planning Board to make sure that the plans include planting of X number of trees, and looking at the plans for the park in the planting guide. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, you can count the trees. There's the correct number of trees in there. And then for the, for the calculating the exact number of feet of stone walls which would be placed where, that was something that I discussed with Greg, and was discussed at several working group meetings. And the key to understanding that for me was to, was to appreciate that the stone wall mitigation work is part of the plans that were already, the June 2021 plans that, that Perkins is, is poised to execute on, you know, in a, in a couple of weeks. So that's why, just, just to sum this up, I thought we had basically already addressed these particular concerns, which were about replanting of trees and making sure that stone walls were placed in certain places. But, and one last thing, sorry, is, okay, from an aesthetic standpoint, another thing that came up towards the end of the working group meetings, wouldn't it, would it look nice if the entire border of the new park was surrounded by a stone wall? And there are two issues that came up there. One, if you put in a new wall, then the color of the stones would make it look different and maybe unattractive in relation to the existing ones. And then two, just as a cost concern, you know, of having someone under a prevailing wage take rock by rock by rock, build, you know, hundreds of feet of new, so what we decided was to have it as an alternate bid. Okay, so there's the base work of planting the trees and the rockways, and then depending on what the price is, the Select Board may choose to construct even more stone walls. So that's where I think things stand.
So, no, 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 let me just, let me just ask Kathy. My, my question was, when do you anticipate work going to start on the park? Very simple, on the park. I, I, and it was, I, I know I asked about the road initially. So I'm trying to find out what, how much time do we have before work is actually going to start?
So here's your schedule. We're trying to avoid this sitting there for another whole year. So that means you've got to get done by the fall, right? Late fall at the most. So the plan right now is for the bid documents to go out around July 5th, get the bids back by the end of the month, and then according to Mr. Russell, it should take about two months to build the park. So add on 15 days. So August 15th, September 15th, October 15th. So that gets us done before the winter. So that's what, that's the schedule we're trying to, to meet here.
So that being said, then, seeing as our next meeting is the 20?
The 10th.
The 10th. It's after the bid docs go out. I'm, I'm just trying to, how we can provide comments?
We, we can, we can delay those a few, I mean, a few days is not going to hurt anything. This is a tentative schedule that we had based on what we now know, that there's no major site plan review needed, according to Town Council. But if you want, if you want to say, Select Board, please give us a, we really do want to weigh in here. Give us a few more days. That's not unreasonable. In fact, it's totally reasonable.
All right, I'm, I'm-
One, one other-
Yeah, I'm done.
This might-
Thank you. Sorry.
Help too. Okay, so in the whole discussion about the completion of the park, and there's some design elements of it that VHB had recommended that we just took out, because we don't know how they're going to fit in with other parts of it, there's the possibility, and we discussed this at the Select Board Goal Setting Meeting in the first week of July, is another project, which would be kind of a project to tie together some, you know, loose ends or unfinished business in the town center, like the railing around the town common. You've heard a lot of concerns about maintenance of the old burial ground, addressing that, and then also kind of finishing the history walk part of like the actual signage within the park. So there's potentially, I can't guarantee this at all, because it's just something that was discussed at a very conceptual level at a goal-setting meeting. But there's also a possibility, if, you know, the Planning Board feels, we'd like to have this in this space, there's a, there's an opportunity, maybe even the next fiscal year, to give us an idea that could be incorporated into a plan like that.
Lisa, we're also worried about the budget. We've got $250,000 to spend on this park, which is not a lot of money on a park. We might another year. I don't know what the costs are going to be, but they're going to be more, whatever they are. So that, that is, so we are worried about money.
So to complete by Octo-, mid-October, the drop dead start date is what?
So Greg, I, I got the two months from Greg as far as what he thinks is going to take to roughly complete the park once the bid's out, it's been accepted.
So that would be mid-August. So to me, it certainly makes sense that we could have sufficient time between now and mid-August to complete our site plan review.
So you, but you, so the bid docs go out roughly July 7th. We think they come back around July 31st. I assume it'll take two weeks for whoever, if we get a contractor, which is, is not necessarily a for-sure thing, August 15th before they would be able to mobilize. So that's where I got my October 15th. We gotta-
We're not talking about reinventing your, your project. We're talking about the site plan review.
So, but it's still October 15th with what I-
My point being, how would that impact the bidding? If we're not going to be making substantive changes, we're not, again, we're not designers.
Well, the plans all along had been to give you the bid docs at the same time they went out, so you had them to look at. So we had never intended-
So that's a, in effect, site plan review.
It was site plan review until-
Understanding why we're, we're not-
Jesse, I didn't realize we didn't have to have major site plan review till literally seven days ago.
I, I don't, I, well, let's assume-
So I assume, so the plan-
For the sake of this discussion you and I are having right now, that major site plan review was required.
Okay, and so, and we thought so-
The timeframe works. That's my point.
So when I thought that it was required, the plan had been to give you the plans at the same time that the plans went out to bid, assuming that's permissible. And again, I don't know that that's truly the way it should be. You guys may have said, no, we want to do our thing first before, because we may make changes to them, right? So you weren't in a risk that you're handing someone documents to bid on that might change. But we still thought that was the way to do, to try to speed things up. Now we've been told, you don't need the major site plan review. So what we're offering is, we still want you to look at it. We still would like constructive comments back as far as that goes. So that's fine.
Right.
And there's no reason to think you won't have time to make those comments, based on the calendar I just outlined.
So-
So we really just don't want this to stick for another year. That, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah. I think, I, I mean, I, I think I'm in agreement with that concept of expediting our review within a timeframe that works for completion of the project by mid-October. I don't think that necessitates not doing the site plan process personally. I think that we, you, understanding your attorney's position, that aside, you could still do the site plan process as an act of good faith-
Right, voluntarily.
Between the cooperation of the boards. And that would be my recommendation at this point, that we can get that done in a timely fashion.
So obviously, there's two out of five people sitting here tonight, so we don't have a decision-making group. But if we, if the Select Board were to agree on that path, that we believe we don't have to do this, but we want you to be involved, so we'd like to voluntarily ask you to do this, would the Planning Board then agree on a timetable, so we really can try to, to stick with this? That's what we would ask in return.
Seems logical to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just want to be very careful, because now the word agreement is being used, right? Because that's, now we have a, okay. Because I, I think I have a different view, right, from, from what Ms. Cook is saying. So, and this is all the importance of deliberating things with everyone, because, you know, the premise of this whole discussion is that there was an agreement about something that I didn't vote on, so.
But if we could just get the timetable from them, that they would use for this, that would be-
Here's, here's one thing that I, I worry about, that a weird thing that happened, was how the Trails Committee spent all that work on the, you'll think, how does this have any relation to this? Trails Committee, Kat McKee did all that work, you know, thinking about the project for a, the Peninsula, Peninsula Trail seemed like a pretty straightforward project. It went out to bid, not a single person bid on it, right? So I just think it's a weird environment out there. But I, I worried even about, okay, if we put in this alternate bid of, you know, seeing what it would cost to put an extra, just, just in making the bid like more complicated in that way, it can deter people. So I really just want to keep things on track. That's my view. And in terms of what would be discussed at a site plan review that's not required under the bylaw, I've thought that it would be about stone walls and trees, but we, we already discussed those. And it is important to keep in mind that this, the park bid documents are not the only plan that show the stone wall work. The, the park documents, see, I think, okay, Greg is shaking his head, because we had this whole discussion about, I, I had this same question in my mind, right? The, the other, the park work is likely going to be bid on by someone not Perkins, because they're in the business of asphalt, you know, sidewalks, stuff like that. The park project is going to be probably the, the, hopefully, we get bidders that are, want to do this, and we get multiple bids, but it'd be more of a landscaping company. And that the stone wall park is within the bailiwick. It's under the contract of Perkins right now. So I think we've already discussed the concerns that would be addressed at-
So you're, in effect, you're saying you've done the site plan review?
I don't even accept the whole-
That's the problem I have with what you're saying. I-
I just don't. It's just not, the, when I looked at the, the bylaw again, the word is development, development, all right? That's what triggered, two things. So one, there's not any buildings being put on here. And this isn't the type of project where you would need to get a building permit, and then the building inspectors go down their checklist, okay, look at the plans, you know. You need a variance, did you go to ZBA? So why, I can't think of an instance where, yeah.
Me, me, my fellow attorney here, we're both, I, I just don't see this site plan trigger. I, I think in, in concept, and I obviously can't bind the board, that if there were guardrails and some kind of consideration for a, a single evening site plan, then that's possible. But the possibility that the plans could change could skew the entire bid process, and that's, that's the concerning part.
I guess I'm just in agreement with the other board members that have spoken in terms of the disappointment and the lack of, you know, acting in good faith. To me, it would have made a lot of sense to, in spite of the legal requirement-
I don't see it as a bad faith thing. I see it as more what Kathy said. I don't think there was any, there's no ill intent. There was no hiding the ball. She was working under an understanding conveyed to her by someone else, that now her counsel has said something different.
And just-
Hold on a second.
Okay.
There is no effort of subterfuge or anything else on Kathy's or any other members of the Select Board's part. They were working under an impression that site plan review was required, because someone told them that.
Right, and be that as it may, it still makes sense to have followed what was agreed on and submitted anyway.
Not if there's no jurisdiction over the entire process.
It does-
How can you exercise jurisdiction over something you have no jurisdiction over?
For, because it's, for the good of the town. Because that, because the Planning Board does site plan review, Select Board doesn't do site plan review. This is our area of expertise.
If it's not official, so first of all, I, I'm not sure you guys have, your expertise is site plan review when it's required. So let's assume, for the sake of argument, Jesse, that it was, it's a good idea in general to have more cooks in the kitchen and to have your review of it, because you all have a, a good, solid understanding of what that park should look like, which I give full faith and credit to. What you just described is an informal process that they are willing to submit to anyway. What I'm, what I've suggested is that there's no formal process, respecting the disagreement. What I've suggested is that there's no formal process, which would only serve to bog down a definitive and time-sensitive process.
So if, if there's no formal process, what is our role? What is, what is, what is the accountability?
Because they respect your opinion. That's why. I mean, the same way they respected the opinion of an informal committee that spent how many meetings? Which shaped the project, which they also didn't have to do, but did at the end of the day, because it was the right thing to do. If they, they have, everyone is here tonight, standing here, committing to working with this board.
Yeah.
That's something that we're willing to do.
Well, I think, just speaking for myself at this point, we need to move on. It's 11 o'clock, and we have other things on the agenda. We've gone on record with our position. We have, there's, I think, some amount of cynicism and, and, you know, apprehension, so to speak, about what you're saying. And we're gonna, we're gonna do-
I'm not characterizing anything in the moment.
We're gonna do what we can do, what we can control. I'm not sure that I'm necessarily at the point of requesting independent counsel, only, not because I disagree with the concept, but because I feel like it's a waste of, of our time and energy, given the, what we're up against, so to speak. But I would go, you know, on record as saying, I agree in principle with that. I guess conceptually, it would, in an ideal world, we would have independent counsel in this situation, but I'm just not sure, from a practical standpoint, it makes sense. Thanks.
I just, I agree that we need to move on. But two things. The stone wall has not been mitigated. The plans show 80 feet. 100 feet was required. So that's, that's that. And I guess, I apologize to the board. Lesson learned. Don't take anyone at their word.
May I ask a question about the location?
May I ask a question about the location of the 100 feet of wall?
There isn't 100 feet.
Oh, sorry, the 80 feet.
It's from Route 85 up towards the proposed St. Mark's parking lot on the new proposed road.
Yeah, I just want to add that, I mean, part of the mitigation was that the town was out of compliance with the Scenic Road Act with regards to the trees that were taken down along St. Mark's Street, which is a scenic road, and also the stone wall and any, I mean, let's just be honest, a stone wall that's along Route 85 is not really for public enjoyment.
So not on 85, on the new St. Mark's.
Along the, okay.
80 feet on the new, there is a stone wall on 85.
Okay, all right, I, I think, okay, thank you.
Mimi, you have a hand up, any attendees? Sorry, it's Mr. Farrington.
Good evening, Mr. Farrington.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I just, I've been listening in here for the last, oh, I don't know, 45 minutes or so, and I, I just really had to, you know, take issue with the last comment that Town Council made. If, if they really respected the planning board, rather than, than giving them the plans at the same time they would go out for bid, they would really given them before they went out for bid to allow for planning board comment. By not allowing for planning board comment, or rather, by saying that they are allowing for comment, but not being able to implement it, because the bid plans have already gone out, is not really respecting the other board. Also, as a participant in this process who originally joined, because I was quite angry with what happened on the parcel, you know, it's, it's been quite a long and frustrating process, as I'm sure everyone has, you know, remarked tonight. But the, the matter of the stone wall was never really resolved, both in the working group and, I believe, in the Scenic Road, Stone Wall, and tree removal hearing. Mr. Dennington made similar points tonight as he did in the working group. But the, the issue of the replacement of the stone wall was not resolved in the working group, it was not approved on the plans, and the same arguments were made in the working group that the planning board would have final jurisdiction, or at least final site plan review over such a stone wall. So I just wanted to state that those arguments were made and influencing the vote in the, in the working group. And thank you for your time.
Mimi, can I add one final thought?
Sure.
To this discussion. I think there's potentially a path here, and that path is planning board and the select board working together. And how we get there, I, I don't know. We have, we have two members here, and they have two very different viewpoints. I, I don't know where the rest of the board stands. I, I think this board is pretty staunch in their position on this tonight. And I just think, again, Andrew, you're looking at me kind of funny. My, my point I'm trying to make is Kathy, Kathy worked towards potentially a compromise. And I appreciate that. And then you're, you're, again, you're another member, you have your own positions, and you came at it from a very different point of view in the respect that it's not required, and similar to, to Attorney Taylorman. So I'm just, I guess, if I'm going to take anything from this conversation, I'm a little saddened that we couldn't find a path here tonight.
Okay, again, focusing on, instead of talking about...
Through the chair, please.
Sorry.
Can the planning board, can I please speak?
Sure.
I, it is now 11:05, there's no resolution tonight. You have spoken, I don't think there's any more that can be said. I would like to proceed with the remaining points on our plan, on our meeting, and I do not really want to continue to beat this horse. Ms. Latrell?
Ms. Latrell, I, I have one question that I think follows up on what Ms. Brascio said that I think helps. All right. So if the planning board wants 100 feet of stone wall, right? And I heard someone say that the, you, that the, the June 2021 plans had 80 feet of stone wall. Is this issue just about 20 feet of stone wall then?
No.
No.
Okay, thanks.
I was just correcting that you continued to say that the stone wall was mitigated on the plans from 6/21, and that's not true. Next item on the agenda.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you, Jay.
Appointments, recommendations to committees, the Public Works Planning Board. At the last meeting, we had asked about appointing Sam to the Public Works Planning Board, and he had received counsel opinion that there was not a conflict. So do we want to appoint Sam to the Public Works Planning Board?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor? Latrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuriya, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Next item on the agenda, Town Engineering Consultant, Fussin' O'Neill Contract Extension.
So I provided, Fussin' O'Neill emailed me with a new contract extension as the current one expired in mid, mid to late April. I provided a copy of the last three-year contract extension, so that you have a chance to compare the rates. Primarily, I'm looking for feedback to see if the planning board is, has the opinion that we should go out to for another RFQ for our town consultant, engineering consultant. It's, they're, they were initially hired in 2006, so it's been many years. I can tell you that the Conservation Commission, at their meeting last week, recommended that, just for sanity check perhaps, or other reasons, to put an RFQ out, that it would be due time after 17 years, just to compare rates, see what's what. I have updated Fussin' O'Neill on that aspect from conservation, so conservation uses them, planning board uses them on occasion, ZBA, I believe, is involved sometimes as well, select board perhaps, if they needed them. The RFQ would be put together by the Town Administrator Executive Assistant, who, whose role, I think, in the past also contributed to that. So Melanie would be putting out the RFQ at that point, if that's the way the planning board also opined. So I'm looking for feedback, so I can give that information back to the Town Administrator and Conservation, if we're all on the same page, or if the planning board feels differently. And you haven't had a lot of time probably to review these rates. In my opinion, they seem compatible to where rates are going with inflation and such. They, to me, I even felt like they maybe didn't jump that much. If you compare them back to 2006, 2009, 2012, 2015, 2018, 19, there's always a little bit of a lapse during contract exchanges, extensions. And then 2020, yeah, from 2006 to, to now, the rates have increased quite a bit, but so has everything else. So I would like to have the opportunity to look a little bit more at that, what they're proposing. But, you know, there's two sides to this coin, as far as an RFQ, or to just the opinion that you would continue with them. The planning, the Conservation Commission also had reflected that some of the turnaround time was a little bit slow. And, you know, under the circumstances, I can say that, working closely with them, they have had staffing issues. People are hiring everywhere, and it's very difficult to keep staff. It's a job seeker's market right now. So not that that's an excuse, but it's same as inflation reason. So that's all, I'm just looking for feedback, if the planning, which way the planning board feels.
Mr. Stein.
So on one hand, I've been very happy in my time on the board with Fussin' O'Neill Services. On the other, I do appreciate some of the comments you just made, Karina, in regards to turn times and staffing. I don't know that this department, the planning department, has experienced issues with turn times with Fussin' O'Neill. Have you?
Once in a while we do, but some of the, we have meetings basically every two weeks, and that's a very tough time to receive resubmittals, get them to the Fussin' O'Neill, get them in their queue. Often, we have two or three projects with them at a, at a time, because it's not just the applications here, it's as-built reviews, construction inspections that they're doing at the same time. So sometimes yes, sometimes no.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I've worked with them.
I tend to go with the devil you know. And I'm used to the way Fussin' O'Neill does business, and I'm not sure that I would want to entertain a change personally at this time. So based on this proposal, I would be okay with moving forward with the 2023 through 2026 rate schedule.
Ms. Houlihan.
I'm in agreement, agreement with Mr. Stein. I think they're only proposing 4% year-on-year increases, which is actually quite small, considering inflation, over the last rates. That's really only, that's what, excuse me, what they've been tracking at. So I actually think it's extraordinarily low increases, and really with, well within the, you know, my, my expectations. So from my perspective, I think they do a great job. I'm ve- become very familiar with them, I like their style, I, I think they do good work. And so I would say stick with Fussin' O'Neill.
Mr. Murray.
I think 17 years is too long. I have noticed recently, it seems like, I mean, I haven't been on the board as long as everybody else. And so maybe it's, you know, I've, of course, read Fussin' O'Neill comments for many, many years as documents that have been released to the public. And I'm sometimes surprised at some of the things that are missed, although I think they do a very good job, because it's, it's very complicated and varied, right? But sometimes I miss, and sometimes it appears like somebody maybe a little more junior might be writing the, you know, the comments, maybe they're not checked. I, I think it is, you know, like, if you put it out to RFQ, which stands for what by, it's not RFP, it's RF...
Well, I think it would, it may be required to be a request for proposals.
Oh, okay.
There's a difference between an RF, a request for quote and a request for proposal.
I mean, actually, would Vanessa choose the three companies then that you choose to...
Based on what happened in 2006, it was an open bid, so anybody could bid on it. There wasn't a selected group.
Okay, yeah, and I trust the town that, you know, it's only a few groups that do this type of work, I'm sure. But I just think 17 years is too long. There might be a group that's better, or we might find out that they're the perfect group for us, and I think it's time to put it out to bid.
I found the spreadsheet that showed all the people who requested bids. I think there were about 45 to 50.
Is that right?
Firms.
Ms. Brascio.
Well, obviously, I haven't been on planning board for, for a very long time. I did read Conservation Commission's comments, I thought those were interesting. In my prior life, sometimes putting things out to bid aren't necessarily the worst thing that can happen. It, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to change, it just means to take a look at an opportunity. So again, I'd be interested to hear, Mimi, what you think as well. I defer to the board, but I never think 17 years is a long time. And it just might be interesting to see what else is out there for the board. Again, I can't speak to their, the, the job that they've done for the board. I mean, everything that I've seen prior to being on planning board, I thought was pretty comprehensive and well above my pay grade. So, yeah, thank you.
I agree with Mr. Murray, I think 17 years is a long time. And I think that we owe it to the residents to make sure that we're getting the best, the best deal, the best proposal, the best firm. And I like Fussin' O'Neill, but I think that their turnaround times have been, you know, lagging over the past couple of years. And I think their attention to detail has been faltering. So this may be an opportunity for them to realize that they need to step up their game, and certainly that they can, you know, bid and be rehired. But I think it keeps people on their toes when we don't just renew, 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 renew.
And I want to just add one last thing, just so it's very clear. Above and beyond their responses and all that, they've been very responsive. When I needed something right away, and they knew it was critical, they would turn it around and make the effort to do that. They always answer the telephone, they always call me back within 24 hours when I need something. So I understand some of the, those issues too, but I wanted to say...
You love change.
Yes. And I like working with them. I, I agree with some of the attention to detail and, and once in a while, the lagging. But on the other note, they are also always reachable, and pick up their phone and respond with emails and give me updates and such, so, you know, there's both sides of that.
Mrs. Latrell, quick, quick additional comment. On an RFQ, are references, can you request references? Because it's the question that you're, you're asking about detail-oriented, all these things are subjective and can't be rarely answered in a request for quote. You can get their quote and their pricing, but you really can't get their, how well they are, their, you know, their integrity, their deep attention to detail. So I would suggest, if we are making that decision to do an RFQ, to ask for references.
Yeah, and again, I think, based on what the, this was the original submission from 2006, and there was discussion right before, like in 2005, that an RFQ was going to go out. But in researching all the files we have, it appears that it was changed to a request for proposals. So that's a little bit beefier request, and I, I think you can ask for references, whether it's an RFQ or an RFP, so. And again, I'll give input to, if it goes in that direction. But Melanie Atsuko has been doing other RFPs and RFQs as well, so she's, she's well-versed, I think.
So where do we stand? I'm a yes for RFQ. Jesse? Okay. And I did listen to the Conservation Commission meeting, and they had some good comments and concerns.
So three to do in favor of moving forward with an RFP or Q, whatever they decide.
Q, whatever.
Has to happen, okay. Okay. Yes, very quick.
Do you want us to do minutes while you're doing the...
I think you should do minutes first.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 24th, 2023 meeting of the Southboro Planning Board.
Second. I have one comment on that. On line 230, it says, "Contact Town Clerk regarding the use of ZAC funds." Is that true? Would that be Town Clerk, or would that be Town Accountant, or...
She would reach out to Town Clerk.
Or Treasurer?
I'll double-check on the, let me see this one, regarding possibly the ZAC fund she put. I think it's, I think it's Tre- uh, Town Accountant.
Yeah, I thought Town Clerk was...
But I'll verify, and whatever was in the video, I'll put there.
Okay. So with that, that being checked, any other comment? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, abstain.
Demuriya, yes.
Brascio, abstain.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 2nd Southboro Planning Board meeting, 2023.
Second.
Second.
And I have one comment. On line 41, it says, Ms. Houlihan, Planning Board, motion to close the hearing for stone wall and tree removal for St. Mark's. That should actually be 79 Oak Hill.
Line 41, Ms. Houlihan, Planning Board. Should be 79 Oak Hill. 79 Oak Hill. Oh, that's not what I have. I have public hearing to close tree and stone wall removal at St. Mark's. What's the name of that file? You got that on the Dropbox? Yeah. Oh, goodness gracious. Hold on, I'll clarify right now. Give me one second. That's the 5/2. Yeah, that's...
I've been up since like 5:30.
So these are probably the updated ones that I have in my hand.
Okay. So as long as it says 79 Oak Hill, I'm good with that.
Okay. We'll make sure it's the current one.
Oh, and one more. Line 132?
Line 132.
Sorry. These are permanent record.
Line 1, huh, line 132?
Planning Board will be completing the tree inventory. We won't be completing it, but we will be working on having the tree inventory completed.
We'll be working on having a tree inventory completed.
And that's it?
Would be working on having a tree inventory completed.
Yep.
Line 132.
Any other comments? Luttrell, yes?
Stein abstain.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Brascio abstain.
So now you're ready for Planner's Report?
Yes. Okay, Planner's Report. While I do that, if the planning board can sign this A&R endorsement form already. And let me get mine. All right, quickly. Personnel Board is meeting tomorrow morning, just so you know, at 9:00 a.m. on the performance evaluations. We updated the special, we have now an application for special permit for downtown district, which was created. So at a future meeting, we'll present it and get it accepted. So we have a date on that. Conservation Agent Melissa Danza is the FEMA Administrator, just so you know that. We put out a, MAPC put out a Southborough demographics, which you can get online, information about that. And then there is a rollover of ZAC money back from 2006. And every year, I think we already went over this, that we would, if this form comes up, we would roll that money over again and not let it go back to the general fund yet until we can figure out something we can do with that. And we will be getting ZBA hearing notices from Lara Davis. So when they come in, I'll forward them to you, and I'll also keep a folder so if anything new comes up. And there is one scheduled. There's a 264 Codiville Road, Wednesday, June 28. That's the only legal notice we've received. And I think that's it, and we just need to sign the A&R plans over there.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Luttrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes.